Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Recording in progress.
Thank you, Mr. Recording. We are going to call this regular meeting to order. City Council has been in closed session, and we will ask our city attorney for a report out of closed session.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, members of the community. The City Council met in closed session this evening, starting at 4:00 p.m. The City Council took up one item of existing litigation, Cordova Recreation Park District versus City Ranch of Cordova, and received updates from and provided direction to legal counsel. The City Council also took up one item of anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation, and received updates from and provided direction to legal counsel.
Thank you. Stacy, will you call the role, please?
Councilmember Terry.
Here.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yes.
Councilmember Pulapati.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sander.
Here.
Mayor Budge.
Here, thank you. Congratulations to everybody for actually being in the room this time. Are we going or not?
We're going, yes.
Okay, all right. Stacy, will you read the legal announcement?
Yes. The meeting of the Ranch of Cordova City Council will be cable cast at Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T Versus Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will replay on Thursday, October 5th at 6:00 p.m. and Friday, October 6th at 6:00 p.m. The meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrocable14. A DVD copy can also be ordered from the City Clerk's Department, and a webcast of this meeting will be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you, Stacy. As we always do, we are going to begin our meeting this evening with the Pledge of Allegiance and invite you to stay standing for an invocation. Tonight's Pledge of Allegiance will be brought to us by Loriann Ohm, and our invocation will be brought to us by Jennifer Larrett from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. Please stand.
Good evening, Mayor and guests. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Loriann. Welcome, Jen.
Dear Heavenly Father, we are grateful for this day and we're grateful for the opportunity to be able to gather together and to discuss issues that pertain to our city and to all those who live here. And we are grateful for all the many blessings that we have and for the opportunity to be able to have this great city. And please bless all those who are making decisions that thy Spirit might be with them, that they might be guided and directed to make the right decisions. And take us through this day in safety, and we say these things in the thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Jen. Please be seated. So we have presentations tonight, and our first presentation is from Rebuilding Together Sacramento. Do we have a presenter? Loriann.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, residents, and guests. It is my pleasure to introduce you to the Director of Rebuilding Together Sacramento, Bonnie Patterson. Please join me up here, Bonnie. And we have an amazing relationship with Rebuilding Together Sacramento. It is a pleasure working with them, and I'm excited for them to present their highlights tonight.
Thank you, Loriann. Welcome, Bonnie.
Thank you. So my name is Bonnie Patterson. I am the new Executive Director of Rebuilding Together Sacramento, but I have been, I came on board in 2014. And today with me I have Trish O'Connor, who is our Rebuild Event Manager, and Jennifer Rubin, who is our immediate past president and board member. We want to thank the City Ranch of Cordova for the wonderful partnership that we have had for so many years. We're actually entering our 10th year. And through this partnership, we've been able to help hundreds of low-income residents with accessibility, safety needs, and much-needed yard and home repairs. So right now, we'd like to show you a video that highlights one of these residents. This video was produced by longtime partners of ours, the Asian Real Estate Association and Sacramento Association of Realtors. And it was actually recorded this past April at our Ranch of Cordova rebuild day.
Years and years ago, I was a welfare mother with three kids. I went into this Realtor. I said, "I want to buy a house." And he got me on the Nehemiah Program. And that's how I got this house. My youngest son died about four years ago. And then, within six months, I got diagnosed with breast cancer. Somehow or another, I lucked into getting this program, a program which, I don't know how to say, how thrilled, happy, amazed. Because, you know, I want things to look nice, you know? And it just, it's very important.
Rebuilding Together Sacramento was started back in 1991. At that time, it was called Christmas in April and had some of the same activities you see now, where we do Rebuild Day events, where a bunch of volunteers all converge on one house and make a big difference in the life of that homeowner.
We've been partnering with Rebuilding Together for at least two decades. And one of the biggest reasons we come out here is because we get to meet the homeowners. We get to see how it's changed their lives for the positive. And of course, all our members out here behind us just doing their part in the community.
It's always incredible to see so many people come out, give their time. Every single person here is volunteering. We have professional general contractors here. We have Realtors here. We have affiliates here. Everyone's here to give back to the community because we have received so much.
One of the most difficult parts of my job is finding applicants for the program. We advertise in the paper. We do mailings. We go door-to-door. What's really hard is to have a funding source to go to homeowners and say, "We would like to come and improve your home, and it won't cost you anything." So the very first response we get is, "No, no, no, that can't be real." And it is real. So what we try to do is, sometimes we'll bring a representative from the city with us who says, "No, no, no, I'm from the city, and this really is real." We've done that before. We've knocked on doors with our city reps. But that's, that's the hardest part for us, is to find applicants.
Rebuilding Together Sacramento has reached more than 8,500 homes and 90 community facilities. So just uplifting the lives of those individual homeowners as well as all of the people that use the community facilities. It's been a huge community effort. And so you can learn how to volunteer or donate by going to rebuildingtogethersacramento.org.
Thank you. So not only were we able to help Brenda with a yard that she just could not keep up, but we were helping with safety items inside her home. We did fencing. We repaired a leaky roof. We helped replace doors. You name it. So she's just one of the many grateful City of Ranch of Cordova residents that have been impacted by the Community Enhancement Funds. But on a personal note, I would just like to tell you how proud I am to be part of this organization that can help Ranch of Cordova because I was born and raised here. So when I was born, we lived in Lincoln Village Drive long before we were incorporated. And then we moved out to Ambassador by Cordova High School. I am a proud Lancer alumni. I come from a low-income family. We're a family of seven, and we barely made our ends meet. So had the city been incorporated and these programs were available to us, it would have just made such a difference in our life. So I feel very fortunate that my line of work has allowed me to give back to the families that represent my family and in a city that is close to my heart. So with that, I'm going to let Jennifer share some final comments.
Thank you, Bonnie, and good evening, Mayor, Council, and everyone. Through Measure H, we have served 110 homes through our rebuild days and over 30 Safe-at-Home jobs, which includes providing safety and accessibility items like ramps and grab bars and modified steps. And I can tell you, my day job is to work at UC Davis Health in injury prevention. And fall injuries are the number-one reason that we see adults in our emergency rooms. So preventing those falls is major. And when we let folks go from the hospital, they often don't know who to call for those home safety improvements. So we're grateful for Rebuilding Together Sacramento. Through the Measure R funding, during this very first year of working with you, we have already provided critical repair to eight homes. So these are costly repairs, including roof, HVAC, and water heater replacements and more. So that's very exciting to be able to provide that next level of service because for many years, we've received those calls. And we say, "Well, we can do the small stuff, but I'm afraid we don't have funding for the big stuff." But now we do. So and all these services have impacted almost 400 people. And from a personal note, I would say, to address Trish's comments about the problem of finding homeowners, I really appreciate your sustained commitment to this project and to your partnership with Rebuilding Together because funding us year after year allows us to build trust in the community. And so people can hear, "Oh, you know, my neighbor did that. She's not just joking with me." So we really appreciate your sustained commitment with Rebuilding Together Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Can I ask a question? I also have a little comment. So one of the challenges is, this is an awesome program. I'm so happy we're doing this. It fits right in with our Growing Strong Neighborhoods approach to improving Ranch of Cordova. One of the challenges is, after you fixed it up, you know, if you go back a year, five years, 10 years, what's the outcome? Does your, does the fix-up stay?
Not always. We have been able to go back since we especially been in Ranch of Cordova for so long. We see the same homeowners that we've helped before. By continuing that relationship with them, we keep them enthusiastic about continuing to keep up their home. We sometimes encounter folks that might have issues with hoarding. That is much more than we can help with. At that point, those folks, we usually just help by not getting rid of things because that now is a different level of help they need. But putting things in boxes for them, and that seems to be helpful for them. Yard work tends to be something that people aren't always able to keep up on. So on a side note, we are looking at funding eventually for handyman-type services because a lot of these people are disabled or elderly and literally cannot do it themselves, so.
So that, yeah, I think that's an interesting sideline of the main effort, right? The city's often in a position where we make an investment, and then the question is, "How well do we want to maintain the investment?" And so that's a challenge in, in this relationship. But I do want to thank you guys. This is an incredible thing that has grown out of our desire 15 years ago, I think now, is when we were really pushing in this sort of space to figure out, how do we deal with all these demands and challenges we have with, you know, homes that can't properly be maintained anymore, you know, by their residents? Who do we, who do we call on? And you are the perfect example of our city's approach to this, where we don't hire government staff. We don't create new programs or departments. What we do is partner with people who have passion to do this, and we leverage volunturism. And that's the way cities have always been successful, not only here in the U.S., in particular here, but elsewhere in the world. It's just people coming together to do something.
Well, and then not only that, you are a shining example. We've later worked with the City of Citrus Heights. Out Grove has reached out to us. We're now starting communication with the City of Sacramento, and we all kind of model everything after Ranch of Cordova. And we get to say, "Hey, look how great it worked out there."
That's great.
And don't forget the history of this because it was, it was my first year on council that we had somebody from VSP. Mind you, in my day job for my career, I've been funding and working with, with Rebuild since 2005 through various companies that I've worked with in doing grants and other things. But I remember somebody from VSP came, and Loriann talked about the, like, 300 hours she spent getting paint and wood and all of this stuff so that 10 people from VSP could go out and, you know, fix some dry rot, do some paint, and fix a window, and do some landscaping. And David, you know, in his, in his way that he always does, says, "There ought to be somebody out there that we can work with that would just do this." Like, there's got to be somebody that exists that could, like, coordinate this for us and help us with the volunteers. It shouldn't just be Loriann. I just raised my hand and I go, "There is one," and it's them. And then since then, I mean, both of the rebuild days were always in the unincorporated county. And then we stole one of the two that they were running. But even part of the history, even between that, as we were trying to make that conversation with the former Executive Director, who graciously retired last year, was a colleague of mine, a counterpart of mine at a different bank that was on the Board of Soilborne, who said, "We've got all this money for the materials, but can you help us find, like, 200 people to come and volunteer at Soilborne? And Rebuilding Together will coordinate all of the projects that they did that day." And Loriann's response is, "That's all you need? You just need 200 people? That's it?" And they did. And I think even the project manager at Rebuilding left and went to work for Soilborne because she fell in love with the, with the property and everything. But, but from all of that, we've now had, I think, 10 rebuild days and countless other projects and things that we've worked together for. But it all kind of started in sitting in this room, me as the newbie. We go and we thank staff and all of her hard work and everything that she did. And somebody just goes, "This is crazy. This is so much work. Like, there's nobody we can just pay to do this." And, yeah, there is, and they've existed for 30 years. So, thanks for your work. Yeah, I mean, and, and you're, you're one of the really great examples, though, of whether it's Measure H or Measure R or the other things that, that our voters have entrusted with us, that like, like, it's a big grant to you, and it's, and it's been a catalyst for you to work with other communities and to do more. Now for us, we just look at it like, this is core to who we are, and you're saving us a ton of work, you know? And you're, and you're getting so much more impact than if we just did it ourselves. So thank you for all that you're doing.
And there was a rumor you were going to rename yourselves Rebuilding Ranch of Cordova.
Okay, that actually has been kind of the joke.
Well, let's not make it a joke. You can consider that.
You could start a trend, and then Habitat could change their name.
Yeah. Habitat for Ranch of Cordova.
Yeah. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And, and I know we all encourage you to, to go forward with your idea about handyman. There's a lot of us who are living the, the need for reliable handyman, and everybody relies on, you know, next door and that kind of thing. And sometimes it works out, and sometimes it doesn't. So we encourage you to keep up with that idea. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go on to new employee introductions. And I'm going to turn it over to Micah Runner first.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. We'll have Rita come on up. So as she's walking up, I'm very pleased to introduce Rita Gass as our new Chief Technology and Information Officer. Rita joins our, with great experience in technology and leading large organizations through new and innovative changes. She joins us from the EDD, State EDD, and as this Chief Information Officer, Secretary of State, Conservation Corps. So she's been at a couple of large and complicated agencies. And so we think they might be large, but we're local and more complicated than most. And so we do nice, new, challenging, innovative things. And we're happy to have Rita join us to lead that effort and to work on our smart city initiatives and the different things that we are moving forward. And I think this is based on City Council's direction and my interest as well is to have a team that's focused on being innovative, being smart, and being responsive. So with that, I'll welcome Rita to the city team.
Wonderful. Thank you, Micah. Welcome, Rita.
All right. Hi, good eve, good, good evening, Mayor. Esteemed members of the Ranch of Cordova City Council, residents, and guests. I'm Rita Gass, and I'm delighted to stand before you today as the newly-appointed Chief Technology Officer for the City of Ranch of Cordova. In these exciting times where technology is a driving force of efficiency and innovation, I am eager to guide our city's technological vision to serve our residents and businesses. My career in public service has been both diverse and rewarding, now spanning close to three decades. This hands-on experience accumulated from ground level to executive management offers me a unique perspective that I hope will serve our city well. Throughout my career, I've been intimately involved in the development and successful implementation of programs and projects that have not only won awards, but more importantly and significantly enhance the delivery of services to our constituent. My focus has always been on creating and deploying innovations that provide direct and tangible benefits to the constituent. The introduction of the state-first award-winning intelligent assistant chatbot, providing services around the clock, is a testament to this commitment. Security is also a fundamental focus of mine as I share your commitment to safeguarding our resident and their invaluable data. I am excited to contribute to the future of Ranch of Cordova. As I embark on this new chapter, my immediate focus will be aligning with city management goals and expectations, understanding and existing technological environment through engagement with the team, and building the innovation roadmap that not only addresses immediate concern, but also strategically aligns with the city broader, broader priorities. Well, thank you so much for the opportunity. This is really, really exciting for me.
Wonderful. Welcome, Rita.
Thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Principal Engineer Dalja Vadel has an introduction.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers and residents. Tonight, we are super excited to introduce Narayan Batari. He's going to be serving as a Management Analyst in the Public Works Department Finance Team. Narayan comes to us from Republic Services with a wealth of experience in finance management. And we have a ton of work and a ton of grants for him to manage for us, so we're super excited to have him as part of the team. And he is a city resident of the City of Ranch of Cordova. So I will let him tell, tell you some info about himself.
Welcome, Narayan.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Councilmember and, and the residents. Thank you so much for giving me opportunity. I'm very excited to be part of City of Ranch of Cordova as an employee and also a resident. We moved from LA eight months ago. And we were driving around Sacramento, and we were trying to figure out the good city. I have two kids, three and five years old, and we're trying to find a city good for our kids, and we're looking for a goodie school. And we drove around, and we had that instant connection with City of Ranch of Cordova. And we decided to buy a house and live here. So thank you so much for all the councilmember, city's employees, and everyone who contribute to make this a beautiful city. And we are very excited to be a resident, and I'm very, very excited to be a part of the City of Ranch of Cordova. And I'm looking forward. And thank you so much.
Thank you, Narayan. Welcome. We, we'll tell the Chamber of Commerce Welcome Committee that you need a visit for your goodie, goodie bag. Okay, we're going to move into public comment. This is the opportunity for citizens wishing to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda at this point to, to take three minutes and to tell us what is on your mind. Please state your name and your community of residents. And remember that the city cannot take action on any item that is not on the agenda, but we will be happy to connect you with staff or put something on a future agenda, if that's appropriate. Stacy, you want to read the legal information about dialing in?
Yes. If you are interested in participating in our public comment, you are welcome to fill out a speaker card. Those are available if you are here in the council chambers, and you can bring that up to me. If you are making a public comment via teleconference, please use the raise hand feature located on your screen. And if you are participating by telephone and you would like to make a public comment, please press the asterisk nine to raise your hand. And please wait for me to call upon you if you are joining us via Zoom or telephone. We will start with the speaker cards that I have received for those who are here tonight in the council chambers. And then I will go to Zoom and telephone, and then I will go to the public comment we have received via email.
Thank you, Stacy.
So I will start with Brenda Augustin. Following Brenda Augustin will be Greg Mylenberg, Marilyn Metzger, James Garcia, Helen Wellen-Bashaw, and Jennifer Garcia. You'll have up to three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening.
Welcome, Brenda.
Thank you. Many times, the general plan has been quoted that in Section 11, Safety Element, residential lots are required to be, to be outside the 100-year and 200-year floodplain, and that use of fill is discouraged to create buildable area within the 100-year floodplain, except in extreme circumstances, and that review must occur to determine potential impacts on wildlife habitat and flooding on other parcels. What are the extreme circumstances in the SB 330 submittal currently under review by the Ranch of Cordova Planning Department? When and where has the planning department discouraged the developer from creating buildable area within the 100-year floodplain? The potential impacts on wildlife habitat and flooding on other parcels appear extensive from the reports and require updates. Updates will provide appropriate information for the planning department to determine the impact of building high-density housing in a floodplain. How can the planning department make objective determinations with outdated reports? Only an updated, comprehensive, and independent environmental impact report will provide the details required to determine the impact of flooding in a floodplain on such a complex parcel of land parcel of land along the federally and state-designated Wild and Scenic River. Are you requiring this? The general plan also states that the citywide zoning code includes land-use districts, regulations, and standards that allow for alternative housing products at higher densities and facilitate the provision of live-work units and mixed-use developments. How is the planning department going to address the fact that the SB 330 submittal for high-density housing currently under design does not include mixed use when the zoning is residential mixed use? This area of Rancho Cordova needs to have mixed use provided in addition to housing. As part of the design review, it will behoove the city to require the development to adhere to the existing zoning. Will you do this, and if not, why? While the SBC proposal does supply affordable housing on the upper 20 acres of the parcel, it does not supply affordable housing for purchase. How are renters protected from the financial burden that occurs to tenants in the rental market? The design review process can request that affordable housing for sale be provided since condominiums rather than apartments provide substantial future and financial gain for our residential market and the communities of this area. Lastly, the recorded public easements not included in the design provide connectivity on the south side of the American River Parkway, which creates environmental justice for affordable housing residents, access to health and well-being nature provides and needs to be incorporated into the design.
Please wrap up your comments.
Will you require the proposal to include these easements in a natural setting as originally conceived?
Thank you, Brenda.
Greg Mylenberg.
Welcome, Greg.
Greg Mylenberg, resident of Rancho Cordova Stone Creek area, honorable mayor, city council members, city manager. First, Mayor Budge, thank you for your service to our nation as an Air Force veteran dependent. Thank you. Loggia Center, the Rancho Cordova city permit viewable online was for grading. Current status, after multiple citizen calls and emails to Albert Strickler about D'Amati Sub LLC purposely violating a national heritage site for viewing aircraft and going beyond permit, removing dirt to further install water pipes supposedly on Fire Marshal approval, not our city. Multiple violations and conflict of interest while D'Amati's legal team represents our city. Marilyn Metzger wrote another email to Albert Stricker. Here is his response. Thank you for contacting me. The contract performed that work without approval, improved improvement plans, and without city approval. They have been stopped from performing additional waterline installation. We are evaluating next steps. When are we going to pull their permit? Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Marilyn?
You guys miss me?
Welcome, Marilyn.
I just want to say, this study does a lot of good. I'm Marilyn Metzger. You guys do a lot of good, and you have too much work to do. I understand that. I just was musing the other day about my contact from the very beginning in 2017. I overheard a conversation at a soccer practice with a city council member to a highway patrol officer, and the city council member was talking about thwarting a liquor license for a minority-owned restaurant because his friend owned the exotic dance next door. I was disgusted about that. The next time I had opportunity to contact a city council member, I was gaslighted. I was told I misheard, I misunderstood, there's no way that would happen. Wasn't true. I did hear it, it did happen. Then in 2021, I was reading the SAC News Review. Don't ask me why, I just pick up anything I can read. And it talked about two council members receiving money from True Mark, the developer of the Cassis property. Not in addition to the $1,000 or $2,000 they got in campaign funds, they also received $20,000 to $30,000 from other developers and contractors. And I was sent an email not too long ago saying that that doesn't happen in this city. Well, this journalist and this periodical said it did. 2021 brought us major decisions like the approval of Bold Beauty after the day of lockdown. Nobody knew what was happening, there was no public notice, there was no public discussion until the cement walls went up. Logistics Center application was approved in 2022 without an accurate environmental impact assessment. It was submitted nine months after that application was approved. It was a mess, as we all know, and honestly, that just brings into question the integrity of the application process. And Greg just talked about Logistics Center. That was me being nosy on my bike rides, seeing the pipes that were there one day and the pipes that are not there the next, and the land graded and the pipes that are still missing. I don't know where they are. If they're underground, they should be dug up because they're a violation of the permit. And then we have the Star Trucks on Zinbandale that Val and I have been notifying you of their presence for the last year and a half. They are overweight, they do not have the turning radius that is required to be on that road. If you go across Zinbandale at North Mather and Baroque, you may end up with a Star Truck coming your way, coming out of Bold Beauty, and you may have it come out of the center lane of Zinbandale as it turns right into the left lane of North Mather. There's a new charter school that I had the privilege of talking to people about, and I was sadly told that one of--
Please wrap up your comments.
--council members had propositioned her for using their business for their project. I just really want to trust in you people, and I want you to develop this city the way it should be developed and take care of the residents the way we deserve to be taken care of, because we will fight for you.
Thank you, Marilyn.
Thank you.
James? Welcome, James.
Can you hear me? I'm James Garcia, resident of Stone Creek. I'm here tonight to mention another reason why the city needs to improve its processes for checks and balances. Back in August, the city council heard the need for ordinance changes because of the request by FEMA to update the floodplain and other aspects of our municipal code. I had questioned how long the city had known about the request, and it just seemed that only having a single month to hold a public hearing on this highly critical topic would have been deemed to need more than a single hearing for a public comment and a plot, changes applied. There's a lack of that. I voiced my concerns about the short turnaround timeframe to have the ordinance approved as it appeared to me that presenting the ordinance in August, when it required an additional meeting for the second reading of the approval of that ordinance, was a rubber stamp idea. Does anyone have an idea when the city first received the request from FEMA? Well, I do. I decided to go ahead and put a public records request in, and it was back on August 18, 2022, with initial deadline of a survey of November 8 of 2022 for that questionnaire. That's nine months before the topic was brought before the public. That is a very disingenuous perception of the way how the Public Works Department believes that we need to be treated at this point in time. It's again, August 2023. We were under a tight turnaround. No, you had nine months. How many other areas are being neglected by city staff? Let's work on bringing more things before the public with enough time to properly be addressed. Our input is vital to me, how the city grows. Another area, as fellow residents have pointed out, how projects are run. The Logistics Center has been violated, the grading permit, a number of times, and the community had been informed that the next time the permit would be pulled. But on September 29, water pipes were installed against city approval. The pipes should be pulled out, excavated at the developer's expense, and the permit pulled. We have another information that they had inspected again today, that they're allowed to continue to grade and do excavation for swells only. Water pipes are not part of that grading permit process. This is getting to be the norm. How is it that we have to go on bike rides, drive around, and basically be the eyes and ears of city staff? That developer should be gone. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Helen?
Hello. Helen Wellen Bishaw from the Tiffany area. I want to top off on some of the stuff the other people said, and I'm going to go down memory lane. Let's go back to 2000, when the state mandated districting. Let's go to 2003, when Elliot got into a contract with the county to build some property out here. Then in 2003, we have our first council. We have Dave and Linda living in the same area of the city. We have David Roberts living behind my house, which isn't connected with any of the other council people. We have Robert McGarvey and Kenneth Cooley living in one area. So what I'm going to say is, in various meetings I've been here, this council has said how great you all work together. I have witnessed the conflict between Donald and Linda. To me, it's, a lot of it's unprofessional. I've also witnessed what I perceive as the shunning by the council on Garrett. I believe that there is a hidden agenda with certain things that are happening, that I believe it affects Garrett. Garrett has been the only person on this council that has stood up for the people and refers to us as the people. He has gone against some of the things that you have wanted. So let's move on to the next thing. The builders, after finding some information out, we found out that Elliot was a major backer of a lot of you up there. Depending on who you are is how much they paid you. So when Elliot cried foul after the decision was made with Stone Creek, Elliot wanted to sue the city. Adam said, "Deal with Elliot, let the city sue, the citizens sue the city," is my perception. James Garcia mentioned that the Stone Creek application expired in 2018. Now, five years later, we pay off somebody who's no longer under contract. What I notice is that the city has made decisions not to protect the wildlife. Swenson Hawk was required to get a preserve put in. Linda says there's one 15 miles away. The birds have a 10-mile radius, which would exclude that site. In addition to that, I've seen that there seems to be some personal agendas that go on with favoring certain builders over other, against the cities and the citizens, I should say. My belief is the council members need to go, stop self-serving themselves. The days of "I scratch your back, you scratch my back" are over, and I believe the citizens are going to continue to hold the council accountable, and we have lack of faith. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. Jennifer?
Hi, good evening. I'm Jennifer Garcia, Stone Creek resident. Happy October, so happy it's fall. I just wanted to mention a few things. I've been joining you guys lately via Zoom because we're back to school, so of course we have kids, and that requires me being at home with the kids in the evening. But I've just noticed a couple things lately, and so I wanted to just come here and just kind of voice my concern on them. One is residents, we only get three minutes to talk and to make our claim, complain, use our statement, whatever we want to do. But I've noticed lately that there seems to be a lot of little sidebar conversations going on with the council members. And if we only get three minutes and you guys get as much time as you want to rattle on, it would be just really considerate if you're confused by what we're saying, if you, you know, maybe want to banter forth or check with another council member, you know, is what they're saying true, factual? Maybe just write it down, maybe have a brief conversation right afterwards or ask that person. That way, you're actually listening to us and being respected of our time. Also, I'm not sure when you guys receive your packs of material as council members. I'm not sure how the city works with that, but it seems like a couple different times you've come unprepared. You're not sure what exactly is being presented to you or that you're talking about, and you're thumbling through papers. If you are on the council, I would hope that you have time beforehand to read the material. I know Stacy and her team are probably pulling a lot of things together last minute in our comments, and I appreciate all the work that her team does. But if you guys have a chance to read that earlier and be a little bit more prepared, that would also be great. Also, just when you're traveling and you're on Zoom yourself, make sure you use the mute button. I know recently, we've had a couple of comments that were made that seemed a few of us residents questioning faithfulness and trustworthiness as a council member, and so if you could just remember to use your mute button. And also, last thing, and I'm going to say this really quickly, Siri, you had asked a question at the last council meeting, and as a mom-to-mom, woman-to-woman, I just want to kind of answer you on that, and I would love to have a sit-down conversation with you. But you questioned, "Why do people not come to you when there are two other council members in your area and district?" You come across, unfortunately, a little bit as wishy-washy, that you don't have a firm stance is where you're at. And I would really love for you to develop a firm stance, because I think you would do a lot of really good for the city. But when looking at it, I see a lot of times that you're turning to Mayor Budge or you're turning to Garrett, and you're looking like, okay, which one's going to be more mad at me if I vote with them or if I don't vote with them? And that's why I feel like a lot of people have a hard time coming to you. I know, I'm going to use Council Member Terry as an example.
Please wrap up your comments.
We've never had a conversation, but I know where he stands, and I know that he has a strong opinion of where he's at. And I would love to talk with you more and more on that one-on-one if you would like. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Anybody else?
Those are all the speaker cards that we have for general public comment. I'm looking at Zoom, and if you are joining us by Zoom or telephone, if you could please raise your hand if you would like to speak under public comment. Mayor Budge, I do not see any hands that are raised, and so right now, I'm going to go off, go ahead and read off the public comments that we have received via email. The following individuals submitted public comment via email for general public comment. Those individuals are Tara Kovenbach, Crystal James, Ruby Long, John Barney, Brenda Augustin, and Marilyn Metzger. These have been distributed to the city council. They've been printed and placed in a binder in the back of the council chambers, and they are also on our city website.
Thank you, Stacy. Okay, so colleagues, we have a timed item in five minutes. So why don't we do, why don't we skip the council reports and do the consent calendar?
Sure.
Okay? So items on the consent calendar, 16.1 through 16.10, are deemed routine in nature unless somebody wishes to pull an item or we have any public comment. Stacy, do we have any public comment on those items?
The city clerk's office has not received any public comment for items on the consent calendar, and I'm looking at Zoom, and I do not see any hands that are raised.
Okay. Colleagues, any need to pull an item?
Hearing none, I'll move the calendar.
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Council Member Pulipatti?
Yes.
Council Member Terry?
Aye.
Council Member Gatewood?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sander?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Yes, thank you very much. Let's ask the city manager for his four-minute report.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of items, just to take four minutes' worth of time. Really, one thing I wanted to talk about is, we talked briefly, or there's been some public comment about our online, Rancho Cordova Online, and the ability to look at projects, and we talked about the need for folks to sign into that, that to be a user in order to see projects, and I will announce that that actually has been fixed. And so now, you do not need to be an online user or to sign in to actually see the projects online. So I just wanted to give that kind of global update that was fixed with their most recent upgrade for their, for the service, so.
But wasn't part of a complaint about, some part of it was that people had to sign into the court system for some of the other stuff that we were talking about?
This was just for the Rancho Cordova Online. I think that's a separate--
Right, there was, there was a complaint about, and we should direct them to the court system for that, because they said that they wanted to see all the legal documents related to certain things, and it's not our requirement.
This was our development application online system that you can actually go and see permits that are currently being reviewed and analyzed. And so they no longer need to have a sign-in to do that. There was an issue with the vendor who, in one of their upgrades, took that opportunity away, and so with the fix, we have worked with them to fix that. Another item, just as a positive, I want to congratulate the Public Works team as being successful in working with the Wildlife Conservation Board staff to get approval or being considered for a grant of $597,000 for Rossmore Bar Trail Enhancement Planning Project. And Council Member Terry might remember these conversations about going after dollars that are part of the Lower American River Conservatory Advisory Board, and so next week or in the next couple of weeks, they'll be considering that application. And so we have made a successful ask and look forward to that future project, which was working on a new trail system. And so I think with that, those are my couple of updates, just to give you a heads-up.
Good, gracious. Absolutely. Congratulations to Public Works. Do we need to wait three more minutes?
I have a question for Micah. I can lengthen it a little.
Sure.
Micah, do you have further plans to make development applications more publicly accessible? The example I keep giving internally, and now I'll give it publicly, is Sacramento County seems to have a pretty open reporting mechanism that links, you know, videos of hearings and all public comments and all actions, all paper sort of that touch a given application in public. And I've held that up as one of the best that I've seen. There may be others out there, because I haven't deliberately gone and searched. Just that one, I'm more familiar with. Is there something else we can do to get to that level of a standard? And obviously, we've hired staff now that might be helpful for us in this regard.
So I will say, when this originally came up, there was actually, the online system we're using now, Intergov, actually had this tool, which was very easy to turn on from a sense of being able to provide the public access as quickly and as efficiently as possible, I think, but there are limitations to that tool as far as itself. But I think as we continue to grow and provide different ways to provide feedback for, from the community to improve what is available, I think right now, you'll see a majority of the things are actually there for, in our current system, to provide some of these details of project plans and those things. But I think we are always interested in providing the utmost transparency as possible, and I think that will be probably another type of tool that we have to develop to actually provide that different sense. So I think what our reaction was to just turn the tool on to provide it as quickly as possible, and we can continue to work on what's working and what's not working within the current system.
Are things automatically indexed, or is this--
Soon as it's into the system--
As an employee, I have to manually remember, oh yeah, put this in the--
As soon as it's into the Intergov system, it uploads online to the system.
So it's automated?
It's automated, correct.
Interesting. Okay. So then, let's use the final minute and ask that we adjourn tonight's meeting in honor of-- of Senator Dianne Feinstein, a groundbreaking lady on all sorts of levels. So, okay. Turn it over to you.
Mayor Budge, you can also share that there's no consent public hearing? That's the next item technically on the agenda?
Good point. You're right. Item 17, there are no consent public hearing items. So we're going into our public hearing item of 18.1. And Stacy, I think I'm going to turn it over to you.
That would be fine. And technically, I think we still have about 30 seconds. Sorry.
You could take item 20, request for future agenda items?
Do we have any requests for future agenda items?
Up 6:30. Out, nope, 6:28 was on the clock.
No, it says 6:30 on the screen.
Oh, well, I had some, but we'll come back.
Okay. Okay. Stacy?
All right. Item number 18.1 is the second reading of an ordinance providing for the election of council members by five districts and establishing the boundaries and election order of each district. I have just a couple of words that I've prepared, and then I'm going to go ahead and call up Doug Yokum, our consultant from NDC. But in case you are joining us this evening for the first time for this discussion, or you've missed a couple of our meetings, I just want to try and bring everybody up to speed on where we are. So as background information, the City Council was elected under an at-large election system whereby council members are elected by voters of the entire city. And on June 7th of 2023, a letter from Attorney Scott J. Rafferty was received by the city asserting that the at-large election system violates the California Voting Rights Act and threatened litigation if the city declined to voluntarily convert to district-based elections. District-based elections is a method of electing the members of the city council in which the candidate must reside within an election district and is elected only by voters residing within that election district. Upon receiving this letter, staff in the city council met in closed session. And following that closed session, this item of district-based elections has been brought before the city council at city council meetings in July, August, September, and this evening in October to comply with the process to transition to district-based elections. In addition, there have been ongoing public outreach championed by our communications team and two community forums, which were also held to be able to educate and engage the public on this important topic. At tonight's city council meeting, it is recommended that the city conduct a public hearing, receive public comment related to districting. It's also recommended that the city waive the second reading and adopt the ordinance establishing five districts for election of five city council members under a preferred map of 516C and the election sequence, which was outlined also in the ordinance. This action will also include continuing the practice of the city council annually appointing a member of the city council to serve for one year as mayor of the city and amend and add new sections of Chapter 2.42 Elections of the Rancho Cordova Municipal Code to provide the city council election districts. I'm going to go ahead and invite Doug Yokum up to the front in case he has some additional information that he would like to share, or if you have specific questions that you would like to ask of him.
Welcome, Doug.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and council members. Thank you, Stacy. I am here only to inform you all that this is the final step of your process, and we remain here to answer any questions or concerns, the last-minute concerns that you have. Obviously, this is a public hearing. You should hear from the public if they wish to say anything before you make your final action. And again, I will be here to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Doug. Any questions of the consultant? Okay, then we will open the public hearing and ask if we have any speakers.
Yes, I will start with the speaker cards in which I have received, and then I will transition to Zoom and telephone. FISA Mogul. Following FISA will be Helen Whalen-Bishaw, James Garcia, Marilyn Metzger, and Brenda Guston.
Welcome, FISA.
Thank you. I am FISA Mogul from Lincoln Village. I testify that map 516C violates federal and state law due to racial gerrymandering and racial vote dilution. Map 516C cracks communities of interest. Rockingham Apartments, hecka Hispanic; Chesapeake, hecka black. I've lived at both. They sit back-to-back in South White Rock, and you crack them apart. Those neighborhoods, those neighbors vote cohesively. You cracked a historically under-repped, highly-impacted minority neighborhood. Areas of Cordova Meadows are super Afghani. So is Lincoln Village. The liquor loft shares space with an Afghani grocery store and an Afghani restaurant. We have the ESL School on Rod Bodry to serve the population. It is a community of interest, and you've cracked them in half. I assert that the Lincoln Village and Tiffany areas self-identify as a connected community of interest. In the fight to preserve the public facilities at Cassis, my Tiffany neighbors told the EPA and other outside groups that their interests and outcomes were intertwined with Lincoln Village's. You are cracking us apart to weaken our collective impact. Map 516C is guilty of racial vote dilution. Grouping impacted areas like White Rock with newer areas like Rio del Oro and Stone Creek dilutes White Rock's chance at proper representation. That grouping isn't politically cohesive. It was proven to you that you could include White Rock in a northern district, which would be more politically cohesive, like in map 511B. Instead, you chose to dilute White Rock's minority voting power. David, you have the whitest district of all the districts, but you cut and dilute the most racially and ethnically concentrated area of our city, Cordova Meadows, to accomplish that. Earmarking districts for future growth is illegal. You violated the law when you said you wanted, and I quote, "more than one throat to choke" in New Rancho, even though there isn't enough population there to justify giving New Rancho two reps. That was illegal. Your map has three majority-minority districts, yet it was proven to you you could achieve four majority-minority districts, like on map 511B. You pack us in one area and then crack us in others. Your duty was to protect under-repped minorities like me, not to cannibalize us to feed your ambition. You are engaging in racial vote dilution of low-income minority communities so you can entrench your incumbencies. I'm ashamed of map 516C and what it tells me about the city council's culture and its disregard for the law. You're not above the law. 516C reminds me of Alabama's racial gerrymandering of congressional districts.
Please wrap up your comments.
We just watched the Supreme Court rule against it. Again, I remind you, you're not above the law. Thank you.
Thank you, FISA. Helen?
Helen Whalen-Bishaw from the Tiffany area. I don't agree with this map, and the reason I don't agree with this map is several areas. The most dangerous area that needs to be protected is the National Wild and Scenic River System, which is the American River Parkway. In this map, David has it all. If he gets eliminated, like with the Cassis property from voting, how do we know how the other people are going to vote? That's totally wrong. This map also, to me, represents the future growth. It does not represent what the 2020 census told us about. Another thing I don't agree with this is, I made a statement earlier about I feel that one council member is being shunned by the rest of you frequently. This districting, the way you've drawn it up and who's can run and who can't run, Garrett has a seat to 2026. Therefore, two council people should be looking for other things to do, whether move or whatever. You left out, you have two places vacant. Garrett should have the opportunity to serve out his time and to come, be able to run for a future election. It looks like, to me, he's being bullied with this. I also would like to know, and I hope Dave will explain the comment that you made during the, when your mic was open. People were texting messages wildly around town about who heard this, who heard that. To me, this map should be thrown out. The other map you proposed should be thrown out, and there's only two maps left, 511B and 522. It clearly represents a diversity in the community with the way they broke down this area. The American River Parkway would have been protected by two to three council people who would get to learn how valuable that river is. It would also give minorities a better opportunity because more of the low-income area would be represented. And also, as FISA said, how this map destroyed certain neighborhoods. And during the council meeting, you all talked about how this map didn't meet what you wanted, and you wanted to realign territory. Based on that, this map and the other map should be thrown out that you recommended, the two C maps. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. James, I think?
Marilyn. You're right, James.
Okay, welcome, James.
Hello, I'm James Garcia, resident of Stone Creek. I definitely want to enhance on everything that the two previous speakers have said. This map was a travesty for the public. There were other maps that had better choices, that kept neighborhoods together, kept communities of interest together, protected the American River Parkway. I also want to elaborate on what my wife was going to say, but she had to be gone, as we said. This was a quote that she texted me during the meeting, during the break. Sander was talking on a live mic and said, hey, we got it. I had to do, you know, some tricks up there, but it got done. Zoom had a break in that recording for our, on our website from 8:27 PM to 8:40 PM. Metro Cable had a longer break, 8:27 PM to 8:42 PM. After hearing this nice quote from the break, there was this nice speech about trust, and that was a slap in the face. This appears to many of the public, to me and to many of the public, that the process is more than a song and dance performance. That's it. Two maps provided a better position for this representation, since American River Parkway is a vital area. It now has less, actually, only has a single representation. That's it. That constantly recuses themselves if they were to get elected again because of the Cassis project. There's other areas. The whole fact that the city touted that the Anatolia zip code is the highest in the region, that's a violation to have them run in a presidential year. They should not be running in 2024. They should be in 2026 because they have the most affluent voters of the whole entire city. It's touted by you as the council at the election of our 20th anniversary party that they are the wealthiest. They need to be running in 2026, not 2024, as was approved. That is a violation of a federal law on this. They need to go there. I'm sorry, this map is garbage.
Thank you, James. Marilyn?
Hi. I'm sorry to say I missed a lot of these meetings because my daughter was moving her business, and we worked 12 hours a day for about a month.
What did she choose in the palm trees?
Pardon me?
Which palm tree did she choose?
Which palm tree?
Remember, we met at the Home Depot, and she was choosing, which one did she pick out?
Oh, I don't know. I don't do plants.
That's Garrett's joke.
No, that's truth. We were.
No, we were there. That was a really interesting conversation, by the way, sir.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate that time.
All right, you got all your time back. Kid it.
I did happen to be on that Zoom, and I did unfortunately hear what Mr. Sander said. And I have to say, it was very disturbing and discouraging because, again, it feeds into the distrust and the fact that we think things are going on behind the scenes. I too do not like this map. I cannot get as specific as everybody else because, again, I didn't get to invest a lot of time in it. FISA, what an amazing person she is and what an amazing presentation she gave that gave you specific slights and preferences that this map represents. I really don't like the size of five with Rio del Oro being joined together with Stone Creek. That's all Elliott people, and we all know Elliott loves you council members. And I would like to know, just on the topic of Elliott, when did we change the height of warehouses or buildings to 60 feet tall, which is in the Rio del Oro special planning? Is it 60 feet tall that they can put buildings next to a house? Because it said the distance was only 30 feet from the closest house in Rio del Oro. I think that personal representation is imperative. I like the fact that we get to vote for the person that will be representing us, but I also agree that the riverfront should be divided between more than one person. That is one perspective from somebody who lives in that beautiful area, and you have to recuse yourself. You're a resident. What does that leave the rest of us to do? We can't have any say-so in it. It has to be the people that live there, and we need a representation that does that. So it should be divided. It is a community park area. It is not a private park area for that area. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Marilyn. Next?
Brenda Guston.
Brenda?
Following Brenda will be Lupe Hernandez. And if you're joining us via Zoom or telephone, we will call upon you next.
Hello. Speaking to map 516C, having one representative for the entire American River and its Parkway does not provide the variety of representation which people in Rancho Cordova require. This design divides residents of Lincoln Village and their representation in what may improve access to the tremendous health benefits provided by the American River on the west side. Connectivity on the south side of the American River specifically has been impaired for years due to lack in completing the American River Parkway Plan of 1968, which residents continue to ask for. This is what could be called inequitable justice rather than environmental justice. The community parking Lincoln Village provides for the west side of Rancho Cordova, the entrance to the city, not only the south side as this map divides. Rather than enabled division by Folsom Boulevard into the right or wrong side of the tracks, what if instead, the welcome mat to this all-American city has stated on this city building welcomes all to both sides of the tracks, inviting all who participate to look left and right, north and south, to live, learn, and grow within a mix of socioeconomic groups? This design allows a majority of residents living along and close to the river to control. While this may seem appropriate because it's their neighborhood, it can also be seen as dominating when access and use of this federal and state-designated Wild and Scenic River needs representation by all residents of Rancho Cordova on the north and south side of Folsom Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Welcome, Lupe.
Good evening, council people, mayor, fellow residents, citizens of Rancho Cordova. I'm not here to repeat anything that has already been said. FISA said it very well. She articulated her points, the violations. But I want to remind the city council. She articulated her points, the violations, but I want to remind the city council and what the consultants had to say. The NDC consultants that you all pulled in to guide you in this process, nobody stuck to the rules. The districting rules and goals, the federal laws, number one, equal population, and you all have this in your in your folders and in your portfolios. Federal Voting Rights Act and no racial gerrymandering. That's the federal law that's been violated. Let's talk about the California criteria for the cities to follow. Geographically contiguous, undivided neighborhoods and communities of interest. Where does that that really hits a point on what we're trying to say that is being put on this map that we do not agree with, 516C. Easily identifiable boundaries, compact, do not bypass one group of people to get more distant group of people, prohibited, shall not favor or discriminate against a political party. I'm just reading what's on here. I'm not saying that they all took place, but I'm saying 99.9% of these took place. You're in violation. There are clear laws that have been broken here. Not only the Civil Rights Act, but the same issues are being filed and complaints have been submitted to the Attorney General in Butte County, LA County, and West Sacramento. This is only California, and these are recent cases. The Fair Maps Act, a total you 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 in the third section of other districting principles, your consultant, not our consultant, but your consultant included, future population growth. No, 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 uh-uh. That cannot happen. That's not part of the plan. 511B clearly identifies and puts areas of common interest in sections that belong.
Please wrap up your comments.
I need to get some water, please. The I need to get some water, please. Excuse me. I need additional time due to my disability, please. Contact has been made with the Attorney General's office, specifically the Department of Justice, and a filing for the violation of California Voters Rights Act. Yes, those contacts have been made, and yes, there will be a filing. Do not think we will not do it. You're not playing nice. You're not playing fair, and you're doing a complete violation of why we're here. Shame on you. 516 is not what we chose. The people have spoken. The citizens have spoken. We've all agreed on what we want. Why aren't you listening? Thank you.
Thank you, Lupe. Anybody else?
Mayor Budge, I'm looking at Zoom and telephone, and I see one hand that is now raised. Alan, I'm going to go ahead and allow you to speak if you can unmute yourself.
Welcome, Helen.
Hello, City Council. I just wanted to say that I joined that meeting via Zoom as well, and I heard the hot mic comment. You know, it's pretty surprising. One, that it's 2023 and we're still struggling with mute buttons. Two, that, you know, the words that were said, however they were meant, the implementation of them came off a particular way. And it's things like that, and then talk about trust very shortly thereafter, that drives a lot of the comments, I think you guys heard, and open public comments that hate. And then when we see how these maps are shaped as well, drives concern and distrust. Thanks.
Thank you, Alan. Anybody else?
That's all the speakers that we have. One more. Donnell Cummings. Donnell, I'm going to go ahead and allow you to speak if you can unmute yourself.
Welcome, Donnell.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I just wanted to keep my comments short. I just wanted to say that I support FISA's comments and her map choices. Thank you.
Thank you, Donnell. Anybody else?
There is no additional public comment or hands that are raised.
Okay, then we'll close the public hearing. The first item is to or the second item is find out if the council has any additional comments or questions of staff or the consultant.
Sure. I'll make a comment since there were a lot of a lot of public comments based on my failure to hit the mute button. And unfortunately, you know, I was in an unusual situation in a room in my mom's house, a little tired probably from a long day's drive and a long meeting. I thought I'd hit it, had not, but in a way, I'm kind of glad I didn't because of this this outcome. I should have used the word skills because this was a very difficult process trying to get this council together on what a map was we could agree on. And if you if you pay attention to what happened in that meeting, right before that break, we had a divergence of opinion up here, and it took some facilitation, some skills to bring that together towards agreement on something. And that was the word I should have used, but I was tired, did not did not use that word, and I regret it. I particularly regret it because
Do you have some order, Adam?
I particularly regret it because I thought that moment was an opportunity to build more trust. And unfortunately, in my stumbling around for words, I added to antitrust, and that is that is a shame. I think we can come together as a community on a lot of issues. There's a lot being well-done in this community, a lot of good being done by a lot of people. There are a few issues that have divided us in in communities, and those are unfortunate. There is progress being made even on those. So my hope is that, you know, we can still come together as a community of mutual trust and build that trust going forward. But I apologize again for any misunderstanding that my comment may have made or led to. With that, if there's comments on the maps.
Well, I I would just suggest everybody read the the letter that we received from Mr. Rafferty praising us for the maps that we chose and the and the process that we took. And I've said this from the very beginning, and I said in the last meeting that we're not going to please everybody, and frankly, a handful of people that, you know, have been championing this idea, you know, have been doing it out of spite and out of revenge in some ways against people that are sitting up here. And we continue to hear some of those comments. But I mean, if you look at it, they they the attorney praised us for creating districts that had 40% black and Latino voters in the district. So, you know, wherever you drew those lines, you know, you were going to divide certain places and certain and we and we looked at that in multiple places, whether that was on the east side of the county or the the city or or the west side. Are these perfect? No, but we only had a certain amount of time to comply with this law, and it is not a law that we decided. It is one that was thrust upon us and told to us in a very prescriptive way. And I think we put together, in my opinion, the best map that the five of us could wrap our brains around. If we had 10 more months, maybe we'd come up with with different solutions. I don't know. But you have to draw those lines somewhere, and we are not, I mean, we're a city, from what I understand, at the LAFCO meeting when it was decided, there was like 12 different maps on a wall, and most all of them had had only the developed part of the city. So everything that was to the east of Sunrise, the county didn't want us to have any of it. And, you know, when you look at where those lines are drawn, when you look at where the school districts are, when you look where the park district is, I mean, we even had the attorney, you know, pointing out that in one place that, well, everybody that lives over there gets, you know, is in the same water district. And I pointed out that there are actually four water districts in the in the point of the map that he pointed out. So we're a, you know, a 20-year-old city that drew our lines 20, you know, 50 years after some of the governments and communities were created and planned and built here and were bookended by a former airbase and a VA hospital and a jet manufacturer that doesn't exist anymore on the other side. And so you look at you look at where we where we've come, and to sit here and say that we're going to just draw perfect maps that are going to please everybody is is a farce. And so I appreciate the people, even the ones that are frustrated, that don't like this map, that you you made your opinions known, you are part of the process, and I think you improved it to get us to where we are. But again, we have to adopt something, or we leave the city liable to to legal action, which is exactly what the law was designed to do. And again, I don't like the timelines, and I don't think that this is the perfect map, but I think it's the best that we can do in the time that we have.
Thanks, Donald.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Garrett, Siri? Are we ready for a motion?
I'll I'll just add briefly. A third of cities now, roughly, have adopted these maps. About a quarter of school districts have adopted these maps, have districts. But culturally, I really hope that this doesn't have the impact that some of the comments tonight kind of suggested. And I understand how it's easy to to rush to a conclusion, but I think the danger here would be, as some people kind of suggested, if we culturally, as a council, decided that, hey, once you're in a district, you're king of that district, and no one else gets a say in what happens in that district except for the king of the district. Now, that is not speculation. That happens de facto in boards of supervisors all over the state that are run that way.
And city councils.
And some city councils. It is not a healthy way to do business at all. The reality of these districts are, this determines where we live. It may determine where we have more attention and focus, probably should, but our responsibilities are citywide. Nothing happens at this dais without three of us saying, do that. It's never going to be, and I hope it never is by any process or assumption, a single individual's choice about what happens in a certain part of town. That is just dangerous in my mind, and it tears us apart because over time, then, it becomes a district versus district battle up here, and nobody wants that. Everybody loses if that happens. So my admonition, and I've done this a couple of times now in this process, is please keep in mind, we're all elected to represent all of the city, although we have to live in a certain district. That's the point of this exercise.
And I've and I've shared too, because I think as the only the only other person here who has served on an elected body that was in districts, that that did happen, but also the converse of that happened, where you had other members willing to make a decision that affected that district, but it was the right thing to do. And I'll give you the example of closing schools that were saving $1 million a year. And unfortunately, you know, the school board member in that area was saying no, and the rest of us said, but you don't have enough kids to run it. And if you had a critical mass of kids in this other school, you could offer music programs and after-school reading and other things like that because you'd have enough kids that would sign up for whatever the given program is. So that can happen, what you're describing, but again, the opposite of that can happen sometimes where people that don't necessarily get elected by the people in that part of town have to make a decision that may not be popular for that part of town, but it's the best thing for the city in some in some instances. But I agree, you know, if we sit here and we just say, like, what the city of Sacramento does with almost every grant that they get, split it among all eight of us, and everyone gets the same, when there's clearly certain places that have a higher need for certain services than others, right? And the city of Sacramento is made up of very, very affluent communities and very, very economically challenged communities, just like we have here. And if you look at how we've administered Measure H and a lot of other things, you can see on a plot map and in a heat map, wherever, that we focus our attention in the places that need it most. And so I hope we'll continue to to do that regardless of where we live, and and I'm cautiously optimistic that we will.
So I agree with both of you.
Thanks.
I would never have have willingly voted to undertake this for exactly the reasons that David mentioned. From my perspective, this is not a healthy way to run a city. We've all five needed to know the city of Rancho Cordova. We've all five needed to know all the streets and the parks and the schools. And 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 our challenge is to make sure that we continue to do that and not just focus on the area that we live in. Does anybody else have the language that we need to use? Am I the only one who's looking at it?
Do we need to say it?
Yes.
Or move the item?
No, you can't.
The 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 motion would be to waive the second reading and adopt the ordinance establishing the five districts for the election of five council members that would continue the practice of the city council annually appointing a member of the city council to serve for one year as the mayor of the city and amending and adding new sections to Chapter 2.42 Elections of the Rancho Cordova Municipal Code to provide for the city council election districts.
So moved.
And before you do that, I just want to say one thing. I want to thank you all. It's been great working with you as a group. Your city staff has been wonderful, worked very cooperatively. And I also want to say thank you to the public because in this particular city, unlike the 300 other jurisdictions that we've worked with, there was more participation than 90% of them that we've been that we have experienced. So I just want to thank you all on behalf of my company, and it's been a great experience and good luck.
And this might go without saying, but do you have any concern about where these lines are? I mean, you gave us a lot of advice about the lines. I don't think any of us drew any maps that we ended up voting on.
We drew one map in that process that the mayor hated. And and you decided not to use it, and that was fine. I said at the beginning of the process that my maps, if I were to draw on, were no better than anyone else's. And that's why we have public participation. These people, everybody, 33 people sent in maps. We found 20 that were actually considerable, and you all made a decision based on that map and the and the testimony you heard. So it was a really good process. I don't have I don't have a problem with the map that was drawn. I've been in this business for 43 years. You're never going to satisfy everyone, just like Mr. Terry said. No one is all, everybody is never satisfied completely. I've never experienced one of those, but just want to thank you, and I thought we had a very, very good process here.
Thank you, Doug. And thank you.
I had a quick question. So the 516C that was eventually chosen, that was from the public or was that modified by, I forget the one?
The 516 was a publicly
Generated.
Generated map. At the council meeting, I forget which one, I think it was the third one. It was the one I was not present for. Shalise was here. The council made some suggestions as to how it might be changed based on the the lines on the the one district on the east side, southeast side.
So we had a B and we had a C.
Yeah, we had a we brought the Bs, and then the Cs were were done after that.
I, yeah, thank you.
Okay. And thank you, Adam, for reading the language.
Sure. You have a motion for Mr. Terry.
So Donald, David moved, seconded the item. Stacy?
Yes.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember Pulapati.
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yep.
Mayor Budge.
Yes, thank you very much. And I know you all may not appreciate it, but as Doug and everybody has said, congratulations to everybody that took the time to try to draw some lines. That was a very complicated process, and I know we all appreciate that.
So going on with our regular calendar items, we have 19.1.
So 19.1 is a presentation of the 2023 Resident Satisfaction Survey Results.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. We're pleased to be here this evening. Marie Chacon Eastead, Communications and Public Affairs Director. We're pleased to be here this evening to present the findings of the city's biannual residential satisfaction survey. So the overall goals of the survey are to provide city council and staff with residents' views on how well city services are meeting resident needs and areas where the city can improve. Similar surveys have been conducted previously on a biannual basis, with the most recent surveys being fielded in 2021 and 2018. In 2018, the city retained the Titilian Company to conduct the city's biannual survey. Dr. Dennis Titilian is the founder and principal of the Titilian Company, and he's here this evening to present the survey's findings. Dr. Titilian is an emeritus professor of marketing and former director of the Center for Small Business in the College of Business at California State University Sacramento. Dennis.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. First of all, please excuse me, I'm going through my biannual, semi-annual bout of laryngitis. It's not contagious, it's not COVID. I've been tested and all that good stuff. So if my voice is breaking up, forgive me for that. So first of all, I'd also like to thank you all for the opportunity to conduct the study for the city and to be able to work with Maria and Steph, and they've been just phenomenal to work with. So thank you all very much. The goals of the survey basically were to obtain resident perceptions of living in Rancho Cordova, get their, I get the ideas of how satisfied they are with the services the city provides and the customer service they receive when contacting the city, how they, how they feel about whether the city is being responsive to resident needs, their perceptions of public safety and the Rancho Cordova Police Department. Excuse me. Their satisfaction with the information they receive about city programs and services and sources of information they rely on to obtain information about the city's programs and services. The survey consisted of a sample of 350 people, residents of the city. They were reached by telephone. We used lists that included both landlines and cell. And the surveys were conducted in June of this year, and we did comparisons to 2021, or 18 and 2021. I'm going to just, because in the interest of time, I'm, you have the data available to you, and I'm just going to highlight, if that's okay, some of the key things, I think, in some of these slides that are probably most important. You can read probably much better than I can, and I, and I may be able to get through the few minutes here to do this with my voice. The resident characteristics were very similar to those of 2021 with just a few exceptions. This year, there were more people that were under 40 and a few fewer that were 40 to 64 than we had last, the last time we did it. There were more people with incomes above $100,000 this time and fewer with $51,000 to $75,000. And there were more people that had lived in the city for five years or less than we had last time. Other than that, they tracked pretty close to the same of what we've had. You know, the, the percentages are fairly close. And so when we're talking about differences of a few percentage points, we're only talking about a few people here. So generally, they were similar with those possible exceptions. We asked people their perceptions of living in Rancho Cordova. Specifically, we said, asked them whether they agreed or disagreed with the statement that you could have a good quality of life living in Rancho Cordova. 90% strongly agreed or agreed with the statement. Only 4% disagreed. This is a little bit higher than what we found in 2021, where we had 90% strongly agree or agree this time, 84% previously. I want to point out something here, that the disagree and strongly disagree down at the bottom of that slide, that represents a grand total of 14 people out of 350. So the numbers are fairly small on that. We asked them whether they would recommend living in Rancho Cordova to a friend. 83% said yes compared to 79% two years ago, and about the same percent said no, 11%, 12%. And, and that no number was 37 people, and I'm going to come back to that in just one second. We asked whether the image of Rancho Cordova has gotten better, stayed the same, or gotten worse in the last two years. 90% said it either was the same or gotten better. 10% said it got worse. As you can see, fewer said gotten better, more said remain the same. There's one thing that, you know, we have to keep in mind, and I'm not trying to sugarcoat that change in any way, shape, or form, but if people already had a very good image of, think the image of Rancho Cordova is very good, and it didn't, it maybe couldn't get better, okay? It could get worse, but whether it could have gotten better, some of the remain the same, is probably more positive than negative. And the reason that leads me to that is the gotten worse, again, was 37 people. And that number, 37, I ran those, who, you know, what those people responded throughout the survey. And most of what you're going to see are in the, in the negative or less satisfied numbers or percentages come from those very 37 people. Not all, but a lot of them. So you kind of got 37 respondents here who kind of trashed almost everything, okay? Not everything, but, but they were the bulk of almost all of the negative responses.
Is that common in the sort of surveys you do?
Yes.
Like people are polarized?
It's called the halo effect. It is one, it's sometimes called the halo. They'll just say no, 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 all the way through. And you do get some of that. Yeah, it is not unusual to see that.
You just, you just called that out, so is there anything unusual about that? Or you're just sort of commenting more on this is a common thing we see?
This is a, it's pretty common, the people, when you do a survey, you tend to get the people that love you and hate you. Those are the ones, we didn't have a very high refusal rate, it's 5%. That, that's a very low refusal rate. And, and the reason, I think, and now this is strictly my opinion, is because, as we'll go through this quickly, the, it's mostly positive all the way through. There's very little variation in responses. I mean, people that were positives, were positive most of the way through, people that were negative were negative all the way through. Most of the people that said they were negative on this question and on the previous one in terms of recommending cited homelessness, crime, those, which was in the next, one of the next slides. So yes, bottom line is yes. It's not, it is not uncommon to have that, okay? We asked the people that said that it had gotten better, what were the reasons? The four main reasons were the streets and infrastructure, attracting business, less crime and homelessness. Now, on the other side, I will say that there were some that said more crime and, and homelessness were negative issues. But some said less crime, and that, 16% that said better said because of less crime and homelessness. And the city's growth rate. Those four accounted for 72% of the reasons why the city, they, they felt the city's image got better.
Was this an open-ended question?
Yes, it was open-ended, and we, what we did is we had a ton of different possible answers, so that, for coding purposes, but it was an open-ended question, yes. Among those who said the image had gotten worse, and again, this was 37 people, the, the two main reasons, you know, shown the high crime rate and homelessness. And 16 of those said crime, 12 said homeless. The others were all scattered about, but those were the two big issues. We asked the city, we asked the residents to rate the city in, on their, on eight different service provisions and programs. And they, it was a five-point scale, very good, good, fair, poor, very poor. The first one up there is addressing homeless issues. This was the one that got the worst rating. We did not ask this in 2021. As you can see, 39% rated the city as doing a very good job or good job on addressing homelessness issues. 33% poor, very poor. That was the worst of them all. Virtually everything else, the, the major, the great majority of people rated the city as very good or good on, on all the others. Police protection, 71% rated the city as very good or good. It's a bump up from the 66% two years ago. The poor, again, there's the 37 people pretty much on that one. Repairing and resurfacing streets, 70, pretty much the same percent, 70% said very good or good, little bit down from the previous time.
Can you go back really quick? I just want to highlight something else I saw on the, the previous slide.
I'm sorry?
Could we go back one slide?
Sure.
Just really quick. I thought it was, it's interesting how, it's not just that the poor went up a little bit, but if you look at the fair, how much that dropped, and most, all of that went to, to good and very good. So you have people that kind of thought it was pretty good already, thinking it improved in the last few years, which is a harder thing sometimes to do than to disappoint people and have it drop between those two. So, sorry, didn't want to run you off your game.
No, 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 not at all. Yeah, I mean, with a couple of exceptions coming up, people had opinions. And, and sometimes when you do surveys, you'll get more people that have no opinion. And, and sometimes you worry about whether they're just doing this to get over, get done with the survey. But in this case, there were, there were more people that had opinions one way or the other. Repairing and resurfacing streets were, again, as I said, was about the same as last time, a little bit down on the good, very good, but, but pretty much the same. And again, I'll point out, 70% were positive on that. The, the best rating went to maintaining the streets, including the cleansing, it's lighting and landscaping. Nearly 80% said it was very good or good, which is the same as last time, and only 5% rated it poor. The community enhancement, knowing, using the city's community enhancement and, and investment fund. That one, we did not ask the, the previous year. And I want to point out on that one in particular, that while 71% said very good or good, 33% had no opinion on this. So this is just of the people that had opinions, okay? So 33% did not have an opinion on this, and so it suggests to me that maybe some communication in the area of telling people what this enhancement and investment fund is and what it does and what it's been doing might be, might be worthwhile.
So about a third of people didn't know what it was?
They had no opinion, and I'm assuming that it was because they, they'd never heard of it.
But that is a remarkable number. I mean, 71% very good and good.
If they, if they didn't have an opinion, were they removed from the results of this slide?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's telling you part of it, too.
What you're seeing up there is of those that had an opinion.
Yeah, that's telling, that's telling you part of the makeup of that, of this answer.
Yeah.
Because you could just look at party affiliation and say 29% would be inclined to say that they were not in favor of it, right? So the fact that you have, what percentage of it didn't, weren't aware of it? Do you have that by chance?
I, we don't know. All I could assume is that if they had no opinion, a high percent, a, a good part of that, if not all of that, is a result of.
Of informed people, or people that feel that they're informed. I mean, yeah, what do you, 80, 88% said fair, good, or very good?
Yes, 90.
Well, and when you consider how much work Stacy and her team go to, to publish that annual, um, um, report to the citizens so that everybody knows exactly how the money is spent, but it's one of those things where it may come in the mail, but it may end up in the round file.
It'd be, it'd be interesting to see how many people said they, they weren't aware of it. If that, if that skewed it in some way, if like half of them said that, and then the other half that said it were saying nice things, maybe because they're involved with something that got funded.
So was this for this, only for this chart where they were not aware and every, so that would be a not applicable column and everything else is a hun, because it's tallies up to 100%?
They were given five choices, very good, good, fair, poor, very poor. They made up a sixth choice of, I don't have an opinion.
Right.
Okay. And the positive thing about that is, it would have been very easy for a respondent to just blow it off and say fair. Okay, just fair. And they didn't. So that told me that they were engaged in this and that they were, you know, they were, they had an opinion, and, and that was, they didn't. Now, that, that, unfortunately, I don't know how many of those said they never heard of it, but I would have assumed if they would have heard of it, they would have rated it one of those five and probably drawn into the fair category.
Well, and one could argue too, even in the 10% of poor and very poor, it could be somebody that's very supportive of Measure H, they just didn't get their cause funded, right? So maybe it's something that they asked for, right? So they may like everything except you didn't give money to my cause, therefore, you're not doing a good job. Now that they're opposed to it, they just, we didn't fund the thing that they wanted, the one thing, right? Which happens a lot.
I'm sorry. Okay. Planning for the future of the city, seven, there was a big bump in this one. 70% rated it good and very good compared to 51% in the previous study, and fewer people rated it poor, very poor. I'm again going to point out the 25% expressed no opinion on this, which suggests that maybe a little more information on what the city is planning, how they're planning, not necessarily it'll ever get through, but nevertheless, it's just important that I tell you that 25% did not have an opinion. And again, those were pulled out of these, they were not included in this. But, but the ratings were very good. Attracting and retaining business, 68% rated it very good and good, another big increase over the previous survey, and fewer people rated it poor, very poor than the last time. And enforcing city requirements in the neighborhood, 67% rated good, very good, compared to 60% the last time. And again, about 11% poor, very poor, which is very similar to what, what occurred in the previous time. So, so the bottom line of this is, with the exception of addressing the homeless issue, the, the residents gave the city services very high, a very large majority gave the city very good, very good ratings on, on, on the services they're providing. We asked the city also about, or excuse me, the residents about, excuse me, about the customer service that they received, if they asked, you know, went in in person or by telephone. In the previous study, we just asked overall, we did not break it out by person, telephone in this slide, and the next slide is online and the website. So we broke it out this time. So comparisons to 2021 are, you can't quite make them, I, perfect. Nevertheless, in terms of rating, 86% rated this, their customer service as they were very satisfied or satisfied with it versus 70% the previous time. And again, not quite the same question that was asked. Only 12% were dissatisfied, very dissatisfied. I should point out, 46% of the respondents said that they did contact the city either in person or by telephone. This compares to 49% in the previous time. And that 5% very dissatisfied, the 7% somewhat dissatisfied, very dissatisfied, represents 19 people out of 161. We asked that same question about customer service, if they had gone to the city's website or RC online. We did not ask this one in 2021. 78% were very satisfied or somewhat satisfied, 16% somewhat dissatisfied, very dissatisfied. One of the things, I think, Donald, that you had mentioned before, or somebody said before, was some of the dissatisfaction could be, not with the customer service itself, but just not getting the answer they hoped to get. Okay? Some of that has to be that. Okay, and some of that has to be that. I'm not saying all of it, but some of it would be built into that. We asked overall, how satisfied are you with the city services that you receive? Eighty five percent were very satisfied and satisfied, or somewhat satisfied. Eighty five percent compared to seventy six percent in two thousand twenty one. And very, very few people were somewhat or very dissatisfied. As you can see, that represented a total of sixteen people. We asked people how safe they felt from crime. And we use four dimensions, went alone in their neighborhood, went shopping and, the next slide will show, went shopping and in parks. Eighty, eighty percent said they felt somewhat or very safe when alone versus seventy seven percent in the previous one. So about the same, same percent felt unsafe, somewhat or very unsafe. The ones that said that they were felt very, somewhat are very safe were a little more men and a little more people under twenty five years of age. Okay, compared to the whole population.
It'd be really interesting at some point in in the future, when we do this again, if we added, and maybe, maybe it's like a five different options of of like places within the city, like certain neighborhoods are part, like on Folsom Boulevard, do you feel safe? Which I think is something that we've talked about, or some, something along those lines. And maybe you randomize it of, they'll get one, you know, out of the three hundred that you get, you'll be asked one of these five versions and then see what what we get. Because it's, it's interesting to see that answer. And then anecdotally, certain places, you would say no. But in general, but I think, I think it, people are feeling, they're answering this this question in general. Because I, I mean, remember like the focus groups that we did over at not La Rivera, I'm I can't, I'm blanking on the name right now. But the apartment complexes that that Loriann and and the team did like neighborhood engagement at. And, you know, we're asking like fourth graders, do you, you know, like how, you know, their parents were their leaders in their community? Well, how? Well, because they're keeping us safe. Well, how? They don't let us go outside and play, right? So there are people that live in certain neighborhoods that don't feel safe in their own neighborhood. It'd be really interesting if there was a way to to have that question, you know, because you don't, maybe you don't ask everybody the same one, but if you asked them like where their neighborhood is, and then see, do they feel safe in their own neighborhood comparatively? So just some food for thought.
I can, we did track what zip code they lived in when we called.
There's a lot of variation between our zip codes as to what you're talking about.
But that's as best I could do with this data.
Yeah, no, I totally get it. I'm just saying, i- if we were thinking for adding things for next time, if there was a randomized, like, you know, now that we have council districts, maybe you do it as those five. Or or there are certain corridors that we want, that we would talk about for that, like, do you feel safe walking down Sunrise Boulevard? Not really, right? Or Folsom Boulevard at night, or give certain other places that that we've, we've had expressions of concern. So just something to think about.
Okay, good point, okay. They felt safest in their neighborhoods, this got the highest rating, eighty nine percent felt somewhat or very safe, a little higher than the previous time. Nine percent said that there was no variation in in terms of demographics on that one. Shopping, this was the lowest rating of feeling safe or very safe, but still seventy five percent felt somewhat or very safe. Pretty much the same as the previous time. We tended again in shopping to find that there were more men said they felt safe than women. And in parks, I'm sorry, this was the highs, very high for parks and a big increase somewhat safe, somewhat and very safe was eighty four percent versus sixty nine percent in the previous time. And again, very few not feeling safe. So the the overall is that at least seventy seven percent of the people feel safe. Okay, somewhat are very safe in all four of those areas. And you, but you have nine to sixteen percent that don't feel safe. And and getting more granular with it might not be a bad idea at all.
Well, and if you just take where the majority of our shopping is, that's one place that you could say shopping here, they are feeling less safe than overall, right? And where is Target, Walmart, Safeway and kind of that shopping district for us?
Okay.
That's interesting.
We also asked them to rate the Rancho Cordova Police Department. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Rate the police department on four dimensions, community involvement. Eighty percent rated them very good or good compared to seventy one percent last time. All of the ratings were better this time than two years ago, by the way. Only seven percent rated them poor, very poor. This, this represents, you know, twenty two people. Helping citizens, eighty two percent, this again was a big increase rating a positive, very good and good compared to sixty seven percent in two thousand twenty one. And the poor, very poor, that that represented fourteen people. Treating people fairly, this was seventy eight percent rated them very good or good compared to sixty two in the past. Notice that the fair went way down this time. And the poor, very poor stayed about the same. And the last one was being able to respond quickly when needed. This one really surprised me. I don't get surprised by much, but this one really surprised me. Seventy nine percent rated them very good or good, because when you feel like you need something quick, quick, nobody is quick enough on anything. I've spent over twenty years on hospital boards and the emergency rooms. You know, nobody gets service quick enough by them, you know, in in their, in the, in their mind, anyway. And to have almost eighty percent rated very good or good, I think is is really commendable.
Well, and and it is, it's a great statistic, partly because, you know, the only things we hear on the internet or next door or whatever, of course, are the people who, who say the cops never showed up.
Yeah.
You know, so it's, it's really important to have this in balance.
Right, and, you know, and no matter what, you you can't satisfy people that it's quickly enough unless it's instant, and that's obviously not possible. And that applies in a lot of dimensions. But that one was a very positive one in my mind.
Yeah, that was nice.
We asked them, residents, how satisfied they are that the city tries to be responsive to the well being. So this is kind of a wrap up one. Seventy six percent said they're very satisfied or satisfied, a little better than the previous survey of seventy three percent. Again, very few people said they were dissatisfied or very dissatisfied. And again, I'm going to come back to that image thing of the thirty seven people. Most of the negatives, most, not all, but most of those negatives are among that group. It wasn't just diffused among a whole bunch of different people. We asked this residents how, to rate how well the city does in informing residents about the city's programs and services. Sixty eight percent rated them very good or good. This is an increase over sixty two percent from the previous time. Only eight percent rated them poor, very poor. And we asked what service or what is our main source of information? And there were some interesting things here. I'll start by however, the the summary being fifty four percent use city provided services. Excuse me, city provided sources. The mailers, brochures printed, city's website, city's digital newsletter, that accounted for fifty four percent of the respondents. The social media pretty much stayed the same. The big increase was the city's website, even though it's only moving from eleven to fifteen percent. The big drop was on the bottom there, television, radio, newspaper, dropped from ten percent to six percent. So clearly.
Surprise, surprise, the Sacramento V never looks outside downtown Sacramento.
No. No. So the bottom line of this is that the the residents are satisfied, that they're getting the information, and the majority of them are using city provided services to obtain that information. So overall, I think we, it it's very safe to say that the great majority of people say they can have a good life in Sacramento. They rate the city high on the programs and services that they're, they're offering, with the exception of addressing the homeless issue. They believe the city tries to be responsive. They feel safe in most venues, a little bit less in the shopping area. But nevertheless, still the the great majority feel safe. They rate the police department high and certainly much higher than they did two years ago. They're satisfied with the information they receive, they use city sources. And if you go back and look at everything, the the metrics have, for the most part, improved either somewhat to very substantially from two thousand twenty one to two thousand twenty three. So there's a lot of good news in all of this. And that covers it. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
We need to throw a big party for Chief Luke.
I'm sorry?
I know.
I'm, I'm talking to our city manager. Those are really impressive numbers for the police department.
It really is.
That's, I've no, I've never seen an increase in any of our areas over the years of of that, that. And for for the thing we spend the most amount of money on, that's really impressive. That's really, really impressive. And I know during COVID, and we did have some difficult news stories and other things like that, personnel issues and things that that came along. So maybe that was part of it, but it wasn't that high before. You know, two, you know, four years ago, it wasn't higher or that high. So that's really commendable and Chief Luke should be well thanked at some point soon.
I I ran that one twice. I use SPSS for my statistical packaging, which is one of the better ones, if not the best. I ran that one twice because I had a hard time.
That's, yeah.
You know, believing, it's a tough job. And for those increases, they were.
Well, and frankly, two years ago was, you know, twenty twenty one and the depths of everything else that was going on and everything. So, you know, it, it was a rough couple of years that that we were polling in the last time comparatively to now. But still, that's, that's commendable to, and not only to to the chief, to everyone in the police department.
Absolutely. Anybody else? Stacy, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
So I have one speaker card for this item, and then if there's anybody, anybody interested in Zoom or telephone, I will call on you next.
Thank you, Fiza.
Uh, thank you. I'm Fiza Mughal from Lincoln Village. I want to say that the satisfaction survey has the same consultant as last time, same method as last time. We're talking about telephone calls to people. And even though the results are a little bit different, they still predominantly involved majority homeowners, majority higher income, majority white people, majority older. I know it's a little bit younger, maybe a little more diverse, but we're seeing the same population being tapped for your satisfaction survey over and over and over again. So I call that confirmation bias. Your results will year over year be similar to the year before, and maybe with incrementally incremental improvements and declines in certain areas. But again, you have a strong case for confirmation bias. Where I would take my satisfaction survey from, rather, would be your qualified census tract. So you all decided or some direction for ARPA funding recently. And part of that effort involved surveying communities like South White Rock, White Rock, and the racially ethnically concentrated area of poverty in Cordova Meadows. And those populations had a lot to say. Some of the survey results were regarding specific topics, but there was sort of open ended questioning. And you heard from residents who might not have such an easy quality of life in Rancho Cordova. And you heard from them directly where areas of need were. And I hope that you consider those as a priority, rather than this confirmation biased satisfaction survey to provide, provide a counter narrative to complaints in areas that, like next door and other things like that. So this I view more as a PR piece and not authentically a good measure of what the experience is for quality of life in Rancho Cordova. How your lower socioeconomic population is doing is the bar. That's where you need to look, that's where we need the improvements, that's where we need the resources. I think that's a smarter way to look at things, because when that level is raised, we all go up together. We heard things like Cordova Meadows wanting street lighting. That does impact the ability to let your kids play outside at night when it's still dark and you don't feel safe. We heard public safety issues, not from the policing standpoint, from the lack of infrastructure, sidewalks, lighting. They didn't feel safe in the communities because resources were not being poured in to make them feel safe outside. Again, not policing, but other things. And these are fixable, and I would like that to be the focus of how to improve quality of life in Rancho Cordova. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mayor Budge, I do not see any hands raised in Zoom or by phone.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Great. Then thank you very much. Thank you, Maria. Thank you, Stefan. And we'll go on to nineteen point two.
So the subject for nineteen point two is a presentation regarding the city's intention to increase the annual stormwater utility one fee for the maintenance of storm drainage and flood protection system.
Albert, kudos on all those wonderful streets.
Thank you very much. It's a lot of work from the entire team, and I appreciate the council and community's support.
I drove all the way up Wide Avenue to Roseville on Saturday and all the way back down Sunrise from Roseville. And you can tell when you get to Rancho Cordova.
There is truly a dramatic difference. And speaking of infrastructure, maintaining and operating the infrastructure is one of the most significant challenges that the the city faces from an infrastructure standpoint. And also addressing deferred maintenance that the city inherited upon incorporation. And we do have shortfalls in maintenance of that infrastructure and addressing those, the deferred maintenance. And Dahlia is going to tell us more about options to potentially address that shortfall for stormwater infrastructure.
Good evening again, Honorable City Council. Thank you so much for having us tonight. So today we're gonna have a presentation about the stormwater utility rate assessment and some staff recommendations. Okay. So just as a presentation overview, we're gonna discuss some background on deferred maintenance of the stormwater system as well as the operation of the system. We're gonna discuss some direction to staff to move forward with a proposed stormwater utility rate as well as a two eighteen process, which we will go into an in-depth discussion of the required steps for that. And then finally, we will close out by a summary of next steps and any feedback and recommendations from council. So starting off with some completed steps, staff did do a presentation to council back in May, in the May twenty third budget workshop. We did receive a direction from city council at the time to move forward with the rate assessment for the stormwater utility rate. We worked with Harrison Associates to develop a rate analysis report, which was attached to your staff report for this item, to develop recommendations for a fee increase. We have identified as part of that process about eight point nine million dollars per year of a funding need. The current rate collects about three and a half to four million dollars per year, which leaves about approximately five million dollars of a funding gap. As far as outreach, we sent out a mailer to approximately twenty thousand residents and property owners that are part of the stormwater utility one area. We held two public workshops, one in person on September fourteenth and a virtual workshop on September nineteenth. We also recorded the presentation and we posted the presentation recording as well as the slides on the city's stormwater website. Finally, we plan to continue to do additional outreach at city pop up events like Good Neighbor Day and other outreach events. So for background, the stormwater utility one area, which is the, what we're discussing tonight, was established back in nineteen ninety five by Sacramento County. It is an enterprise fund for stormwater purposes. That means the revenue and expenditures are only to be used for the stormwater program. At the time of establishment. At the time of establishment in 1995, there was no inflator or annual adjustment built into the rate. And then finally, I do want to call your attention to the map that's included as part of the slide. So the stormwater utility one area that's subject for this discussion is the area in green, all of the areas in green in that map. We'll make multiple references to this, so just FYI. So how do we use the funds that we collect from the stormwater utility one area? We use that for maintenance of a variety of stormwater facilities. I think we mentioned this before, so I'm not gonna go over them in detail, but it includes miles and miles of inlets, manholes, creek tributaries, pump stations, and so on. That maintenance also includes response to storm response, emergency repairs, resident complaints, and weed abatement during the summer season, as well as a lot of coordination with other regulatory agencies like Fish and Wildlife, as well as, you know, Flood Control Board and so on. Additional information about how we're currently investing the money, we are in the middle of a $4 million upgrade of our pump station equipment improvements. That is a project that is fully funded by the city. We basically had to pull money for a really long time to be able to finally move forward with this project. We are also in the design phase of the Monir Circle Flood Control Basin. That will be a basin that will alleviate some historic flooding issues on Sonora's Boulevard as demonstrated by the photo that's included from October 2021 on the slide. The Monir Circle Basin is funded by a FEMA grant in an amount of $2.25 million. However, the city's share is $750,000. Future investments that we are hoping to do once we are able to collect more funding. We do need to do some capacity improvements at our pump stations. A lot of our pump stations are pretty old. Four of our pump stations are between, were built between 1960 and 1985. The pumps themselves are getting very old, and it is getting very challenging just to find spare parts to replace for these pump stations. In fact, a lot of them are obsolete at this point. We also have to maintain, remove, and replace tens of thousands of damaged pipes, inlets, and manholes at an estimate of about $8.9 million. And finally, we continue to do outfall repairs. We have six outfalls to the American River, and, for example, last year, we just completed one of those outfall repairs, and that was at about $1.1 million. So the purpose of this rate assessment and potential increase is that we have approximately $50 million in deferred improvements that we would like to implement to our storm drain system. Safety improvements in terms of alleviating local flooding. So we, the city did complete a master plan a few years ago, and a result of that, we were able to identify multiple areas within the city where we have local flooding issues or there are areas where we commonly get complaints during large flood, storm events. So we would like to do more improvements to deal with those. Finally, it will allow us to be more responsive to storm events with the changes in the weather and these more common atmospheric river events that will happen with climate change. It will put us in a better position to address storm response. It will also allow us to deal with increasing costs, so we have a lot of aging facilities within the city. And because of that, there is a growing cost of deferred maintenance and repairs to those facilities. And there's also an increased regulatory compliance requirement between FEMA, state water board, Clean Water Act requirements, and so on. We also want to be in a better position to meet our community's needs by providing expedited response to residents' complaints and community needs, more robust outreach about the program and compliance with regulatory programs, whether to our community members or business owners. And then also a need for capacity improvements to deal with flooding and lack of capacity in some areas of the city. If we do not increase the rate, the funding gap that we currently have will grow. The level of service might be impacted, and then we will continue to be more of a reactive program instead of having a multi-year planned program that we can address all of these deficiencies. So just for rate comparison, currently, the stormwater utility one rate is at $70.08. That comes up to be about $5.84 monthly. The stormwater utility rate two is paying $150.42 annually, which is $12.54 per month. The proposed rate, so this rate was developed by staff in consultation with Harrison Associates that will allow us to catch up on some of the improvements that we need to do that were identified in our master plan. So that's $156.79 annually. Mostly, that will come out to be $13.07. And this table just provides a comparison of what that proposed rate is as compared to the current stormwater utility one rate and the stormwater utility two rates. For additional data points, we wanted to provide information from other jurisdictions around the city. So in addition to this WU1 and WU2 rates, we also have the rate from City of Citrus Heights. So City of Citrus Heights obviously broke up from the county, so they still have the old WU1 rate. They have not gone through a process to increase it yet. City of Davis just got their rate increased a couple of years ago during COVID. It's now at $122.76 annually for single-family residential, just for clarification. City of Belgrove's new rate is at $246.84. City of Fullsum uses general fund money to fund their stormwater program, which is a challenge. City of Sacramento's new rate is at $200. So an annual inflator, as part of this rate increase, we are hoping to also add an annual inflator that will allow us to address continuing inflation and rising cost of goods and services. The inflator will be applied annually and will be based on the Consumer Price Index from the San Francisco, Oakland, San Jose area, which is consistent with the inflator that we use for the stormwater utility two rate as well. And that's a photo of the outfall repair that we did last year.
The new one?
The new one.
The one you won a award for?
Yes. So a little bit more details about what the Prop 218 process is. It's a multi-step process that we have to go through just because this is a stormwater rate increase effort. So the process starts by doing a rate structure analysis report, which we completed with Harrison Associates. Public outreach, which we also did in the month of September, and we will continue to do throughout this process. We will set a public hearing that will allow us to basically send out notices to all impacted residents and property owners within the WU1 area. That has to happen within 45 days. And then during the protest hearing, residents will basically, we will receive their protest notices back by then, and if we have majority protest, then the process is done, essentially. If we do not have a majority protest, then we will continue with the next steps, which is sending out ballots to property owners. And we do need an affirmative majority to basically approve the new rate. So it's a long process and a multi-step process, but we're hoping to keep communication with property owners throughout the process.
But just to, so that especially there are public commentators or other folks that are watching this and listening to this, the council doesn't have a vote on this. This is informational for us.
This is informational.
The public gets to vote.
Yes. The public gets to vote, property only within that WU1 area. Yes.
Well, we live in, if we live in that area, we do get to vote, just once the ballot comes out.
As council members, we don't have a say.
No. Yes. Finally, we wanted to present a timeline of what the process looks like. So in September 2023, we did some outreach. We're here today with a presentation to council to present results of our rate study, as well as come back the second meeting in October to set the protest hearing date and also receive authorization from council to mail the protest notices. Then in December, we will come back for a public hearing. We will tally the results of the protest notices, and if we do not have majority protest, then we're able to move forward with mailing out the ballots. There are a couple of notices that have to be published in January. And finally, we will hold a final hearing in February where we tally the votes.
Isn't that supposed to say 2024?
Oh, it should. I'm sorry about that. Yes, the February one, should say February 2024. Reviewed that slide like a couple of times. Anyways, finally, we have some recommended actions. So we would like to receive direction from council about the proposed stormwater utility rate and Prop 218 process, and we think this increase will allow us to better serve our residents as well as address any funding shortfalls that we have for the program. If we have direction tonight, we will come back on October 16th with a consent agenda item that will adopt a resolution designating a time and a place for a protest hearing that will happen in February. And we will also get authorization to move forward with sending out those notices. We will then mail out the notices and hold the hearing on December 4th. And basically, again, if we don't receive majority protest, we're able to move forward with mailing out the ballots. And then we tabulate those ballots in February, and if we receive majority, 50% plus one, we're able to pass the new rate. The new rate, it is worth mentioning that it will be implemented July 2024, so it would not be implemented before then. And that is the last slide.
If I can, Mayor, may I?
Questions?
Add one item, Mayor, please. One item that I wanted to identify also is that the stormwater utility one rate that is proposed at $156.79, that as Dahlia mentioned, would go in July. And you can see that the stormwater utility two rate, which is the relatively newer rate, is a little bit lower. The inflator that's associated with that would also go into effect in July. And so the, in, starting in July, those two rates would be roughly equivalent.
But because the SW2 already exists, that's not subject of the ballot. It's only the one, first district, one district, District One that's subject to the ballot?
Yes.
Questions? Anybody?
So can we vote no? Or is this just, I thought there wasn't a vote for us or a decision for us to make?
If you don't, if you don't want staff to go on with this process, then you would vote no.
Okay. Got it.
Do we have any public comment?
Yes. James Garcia?
James. Welcome, James.
Great. I'm James Garcia, resident of Stone Creek. I did attend the virtual presentation that was performed, asked some great questions, got some good information. I do support the fact that we do need to maintain our stormwater basin system, all the pumps. They are aging, absolutely. I just have a, I didn't know how much of a increase was gonna happen until tonight because I didn't take the time to look at it. That's over a 220% increase, and I don't know who all that's going to affect. Is it going to affect especially our fixed income residents that live in a lot of our mobile home parks that we just went through the process to maintain their rents there? Are they gonna be affected, each and every one of them? Or is it gonna be a global applied to, say, that property landowner? And then they're, of course, gonna pass that down in one form or another. So I just kind of fear for some of our fixed income residents because that is a 220% increase that's gonna happen to them. So I just kind of fear for some of them. It's not gonna affect a lot of others in the neighborhood, some that are out there because, again, it's not that much, but it is for those on fixed income. So I just kind of don't know if we can do something about that or help them out, so. But I do want our basins to be fixed. I don't want to have the flooding. I don't, and I'm happy that you gave a top 10 list of, here's your top 10 targets, of where you're gonna try to focus. And they are in our more needier areas, so I appreciate that. So again, I don't know what you can do with that. So it's not a, I'm not against it because I do want that fixed, so. But I just fear for a few people that may not be able to do it, so. Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Diane Rogers?
Diane, welcome, Diane.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Diane Rogers, President and CEO of Rancho Cordova Chamber. I actually just had a couple of questions, and thank you, Dahlia, for sending me the information earlier. Is this purely residential or is it equally residential and business? And are the rates same? If they're not, are they same for business as they are for residential?
That's a great question. So it is actually for all property owners within that stormwater utility one, so that would apply to commercial and industrial property owners. And the fee is based on how much hard surfaces or impervious area they have within their parcels. So actually, for a single-family residential home, the rate is pretty low. For commercial facilities, it's usually per acre, and it would be an increase to that as well.
So when you say per acre and impervious, so if they are, it's warehousing with a large parking lot area, it could be pretty significant?
Yeah, it's still a fixed rate, but yes, it would be, for example, I think the current rate is about $620 per acre for commercial areas. So their rate will go up with this increase at the same percent. So it would potentially go up to about $1,300 per acre for commercial.
Per month, per year?
Annual.
Okay, so, but it's still, he pointed out, over 200% increase, which will hit business at a different rate than it will residence.
Yeah, the percentage increase is exactly the same, but just because the nature of those commercial, having a lot of hard surfaces and parking, that's why the number is higher for them.
Okay. I would just urge council to consider the, that effect on our business community, so.
I think it's 123% increase.
You're right. Math is not my strength, and I will completely agree with that, but...
It's just 100% would be doubling, right? So this is a little more than doubling. 200% would be tripling.
Well, correct. Thanks, James, for giving me the right number.
It's a factor of 2.23, but percentages work slightly differently.
I would just, that's a big jump, and a lot of businesses are still working theirselves out of COVID times and a few other things, so just, I would urge you to keep that in mind, not, I want it fixed, I want it just sometimes that the burden gets disproportionately presented, so. All right, thank you very much.
Anybody else? I'm looking at Zoom and telephone, and I don't see any additional hands that are raised for this item.
So can I ask a question of staff again? So when I asked that, I was asking if this was an action item or if this was something that was informed of. We still have, we have to vote to authorize the process.
Yes, we are looking for you to vote to authorize us to keep moving forward with the process and also give us recommendation on the rate. So we have a proposed rate for you tonight, but if you have any feedback about the rate itself, we're happy to take it as well.
Okay, so that's a little bit different than the answer.
So Adam could read the language again?
No, I don't think that's important. I just want to make sure that I understood because I thought this is informational, but you're saying that it's gonna come back on consent, and we can talk about the rate amount and whether or not we want it to move forward.
So, you know, the rate amount presented is kind of what can be charged based on the rate study. The council has full discretion. Anything under that rate, so they, so choose to support the additional capacity and things that are necessary for...
And legally, how often can we do this? If we do this, do we have to wait five years before we do it again, or?
So, yeah, so legally, you can, you can come back frequently and do this again. Certainly, one of the things that ends up happening because it requires a 218 process where there's not automatic inflators and structure built in. and structure built into it, is you have to go back to ask for approval more often. So, and, and I think if, if you choose not to approve the full amount, staff should talk with you about the consequence of that, either to service or to just finding other funding sources other than these, these funds that would then need to pay for the service. You're either going to reduce the level of service or you're going to pay for the service, I believe, out of, have to decide as the city to pay for it out of, out of some other source.
But.
Do you want to expand on that?
Dahlia, didn't you say that an inflator mechanism is built into this particular increase? And it's based on the CPI or something?
Yes, so if we are to move forward with this increase, we will also add an inflator that would allow us to inflate the amount annually. Yes.
Simply to keep up with costs?
Simply to keep up with costs, yeah. And we have the same setup right now with the SUTU where we do the annual inflator, so.
Right, right, because that's the newer one.
Yes.
So actually, what I meant was the, we're directing staff to bring back a resolution to designate a time and place for hearing protests in connection with the proposed fee increase and authorize the city clerk's office to give notice of the above described protest hearing. So that's the motion. If somebody wants to make that motion.
I just have a question. If not this mechanism, then what other mechanism? General fund?
That would basically be it, which means we would have to compete with a lot of other city programs and priorities.
And there's some logical sense in government to sort of walling off something like this and saying, this is what this pays for. I kind of like that. Is it true that, you know, we took this drainage district over from the county? I can't remember how long ago, 10 years maybe, maybe not quite that long.
I was here, so less than 11.
Okay.
2014.
2014? Oh, pretty close, pretty close. How do I say this politely? Maybe I just shouldn't bother to try to say it politely. Were they not keeping up with maintenance at the point we took it over? And we sort of had to pick this up. And looking at the charges in other cities, I'm thinking that's the case.
Unfortunately, yes, there, there were a lot of facilities that were not being properly maintained or routinely maintained. And because of that, they might have needed repair sooner than expected. So, yes, we inherited a lot of issues, unfortunately.
We've been through this game a lot of times in the past 22 years. We inherit something, take over something, and find surprises, you know, as you open it up. So I appreciate your good work on this. I would challenge council, if we don't do it that way, it's not ethical to say we won't do this. We'd have to find another mechanism that funds it. I think you don't want to defer maintenance on something that tells people their homes are going to flood if we, if we don't do it.
No.
Yeah, I would tend to agree with you. I, I just, I can't recall the last time I was asked to increase something more than 100% in a given year. Like, that just never happened to me. And again, that's why I asked the question that I did because I wanted to understand it. I thought I understood this as an information item, so that was why I asked the question that I did. With my discretion, I, I would probably say continue this item and give us some ideas of what we're giving up in scale with lower amounts and without the, the, what did you call it? The, the inflator?
Inflator.
Yeah. And have more of a discussion because, again, I mean, it, it, I can't recall the last thing that we decided to increase 100%.
More than 100%.
Okay, well, but whether it's more than 100% or 100, it's never happened.
It's also $86.
I agree.
Not $860, $86.
For all those people that own, sit, own businesses in Rancho, you just slapped on.
$86.
I, I, well.
$1,500 to $1,800 per acre.
Would anyone see a $1,500 increase? I mean, how many property owners are going to see a $1,500 increase per year?
I mean, for commercial properties, for full disclosure, if they're currently paying about $650 per year, they will be paying $1,300 per year per acre.
What's the property valuation, though, to get to that level?
It's more based on the hard surfaces on, on their site.
Interesting, so it's not a factor of property valuation?
No, it's based on how much runoff technically is created off their site,
the storm drains.
Which is proportional to the impervious area or hard surfaces on their site.
If it's all dirt, it's different, right? Because it's going to absorb it. But I, I just think, I just want to have more discussion before I make a decision on this. I'm not saying I'm opposed to it, but I want to understand more. And I want to understand the ramifications of less and what, you know, how much more is that a bleed on the general fund? Because in, in the end, everything that we talk about spending up here is tax dollars, right? And whether you're raising it here or you're, or you're cutting it somewhere else, right? You have to understand, I mean, to David's point, you know, do you, do you pull an Al Gore and put it in a lockbox like he talked about, right? It really, I mean, it's all the same money in, in certain circumstances. And if we, if we don't charge it here, then we have to charge it somewhere else. I'm, I'm just a little apprehensive about 100% or more of anything, you know? If that was 100% over five years, that's a lot different than saying next year it's going to be this. And I know we're catching up to newer areas, but if you look at the newer areas, you know, they have Melrose, they have park impact fees or community impact fees, or that, that it's called, right? There's additional police fees and other things, and they bought into that. And they, they knew what they were buying when they bought into it. Here, you're talking about an existing agreement about what you're paying, you know, and all of a sudden, it's 100% more. Like, that, that's a bit hard for me to swallow at the moment without additional information. So I'm not ready to decide today. If, if, if the motion was made today to move forward, I'd abstain.
So, Dahlia.
Actually, I vote no.
So, okay, but remember also that because this is District One, District Two is all the new growth area where the appropriate fee and the inflator mechanism are already in place.
I understand.
So it's.
And that, that plays into exactly what I just said about, whether it's Melrose, all of the other fees that those people understood when they bought. You're talking about existing businesses and, and probably more important, the residents that have been living here for a long time, that next year it's going to be more than 100% higher. And I think we need more information before we make that decision.
So Dahlia, in terms of process, so if you, you had 45 days to go out and then they can, you know, reject or accept, is that their only option? Or, and then can council decide to bring down this amount?
I think the protest notice itself has to include what the new amount is. In fact, I know that for a fact. So we actually need to include what the new rate is in the notice itself. And then people would either oppose that or not oppose it, so.
Yeah, you, you kind of lose the policy choice later because it goes to the vote of the residents, it's yes or no. And so this would be the time to pick that appropriate rate as far as moving forward would be this time in the discussion to.
And if it was to pass, who are we to decide that the voters were wrong about it at that point? If it got rejected and then we try it again, that's different, but, yeah.
This is collected on property tax, right? Your property tax bill?
No, there's actually bimonthly Cubs bills that come from Sac County.
It's that county?
That comes with your sewer.
The sewer bill.
It comes with your sewer bill from Cubs.
Because I was, I was looking at my property tax bill right here, and I'm seeing the whopping $1,200 a year to serve, to, to service one of the school district bonds. But I'm not seeing anything over 20 bucks for landscape and lighting, right?
Right.
That's a remarkable comparison. Okay, so it's on the bimonthly or monthly, whatever it is?
Yes, so.
Bimonthly.
Bimonthly, it's $11.86, I think, or something like that, yeah.
So Donald, it looks like there are two ways to go about it. They go this way, and they vote no, and then we can reconsider coming with the lower one. Or the option that you're suggesting is have the staff come back with other options, and then we pick one of those options to send out for vote. Seems fair.
Are there options to subsidize low-income people on this? I don't know what the status of the law is on that. I know 218 has to be like fairly shared.
So I'm happy to, so 218 does require, when you adopt fees and assessments, for them to be fairly apportioned. It doesn't prevent the city from using general fund money to subsidize particular groups. So you're, you're, you are fairly sharing, but then you could be deciding to subsidize with, with city general fund money certain, certain.
I think you would have to do it on the back end as far as the program that supports individuals, but as part of the process and the vote, I think it would have to be the same. But you could develop a new program to support individuals on there.
You, you could explain the back end as part of the noticing of the front end?
Yeah. Okay, so 218 would allow you to subsidize. It's just within, within the proposal, you can't say we're going to make these people pay for these people. Yeah.
That's correct. You, you can explain that you are trying to subsidize with other, in other ways.
Even though the subsidy is kind of the same thing, you're just taking money from somewhere else to pay for them.
So, so let me ask.
But it's not within 218 because it's outside of the.
David, can I, can I ask your question in a different way? Is there anything stopping us from creating a fund for needy property owners and families to pay this bill or assistance in paying this bill with other funding from the city?
I don't think so in coming back, coming back with this item, but it would need to be very clear in what we do here. I think it.
Right, but, but I'm saying, outside of this process, there's nothing stopping us from creating a fund to assist people with their stormwater bills.
Again, I didn't say nothing, but I, but I think that you can create a subsidy. I did not say nothing is stopping.
Sorry, thank you.
I think the hard part would probably be we'd spend more figuring out who to pay and how much to help than the actual bill. Like, if we spend $100.
But you still end up helping the people that need help paying the bill. And under your, as I said, what you're asking.
You, you could save them 70 bucks, but you'd probably spend 120 on top of the 70 to do it.
It's also going to get more complicated by the fact that it's not the city billing residents. It comes out of the county, out of the combined utility billing system Cubs with our sewer bill every two months.
It's not even called Cubs anymore, but yeah. I just had to add that back to my.
Yeah, and I, and I would say still, the, the option is still to do something lower than what's being presented as the full amount so that you can account for some of those impacts into the, both the community and the commercial community. So, I mean, it's not this or nothing. It's, it's, you could pick something else that is a lower percentage that does have impacts from a delivery standpoint or maintenance or ongoing cost, but doesn't necessarily, you know, dissolve the whole infrastructure of our zone.
And, you know, we're probably not going to do council report tonight, but, you know, we did have the county homeless council meeting here on Friday. And one thing that we talked a lot about was how expensive, and again, this is a very small subject to be talking about this subject in, but this idea about how much we're spending to try to get chronically homeless people housed and what that costs and what they cost to a community by being in that state. And the amount of money and effort that we could be putting into preventing homelessness because of small things that people can't afford, you know? A $1,000 problem causes homelessness in some families, right? And the fact that it takes tens of thousands to get somebody who's been on the street over three years off the street. And when you look at these things, and to your point, whether that's this bill, paying for your water bill, paying for your electricity bill, helping you with, you know, a broken window in your apartment, helping you with a, with your security deposits and things like that, how much cheaper it would be to administer things that help keep people housed is so much cheaper and less effort than trying to get them off the street in the first place, or afterwards. So we spent a lot of time talking about that. And so I would just say, whether it's this or, or other things, maybe we start to talk more about that in general. But again, I'll just reiterate that as of tonight, I would be opposed to this action moving forward, but I'd be open to more discussion around it and understanding at a lower amount, what are we giving up? And since nobody had made a motion to move forward yet, I will make a motion to table to a date uncertain. Second.
Well, if I, if I can, we, there is a timing associated with, you know, kind of this, this voting process. And so I think we have a lot of that information kind of prepared or can be pretty quick with what that impact could look like. And so we could.
I will trust you and, and the planners of the agenda. If you're prepared the next time, then fine. If that's two months from now, I'm fine with that, too.
Well, let's continue it to the 18th of October.
I'll leave my motion as is. I'll leave my motion as is, which is to a date uncertain.
That gives us the flexibility to, to.
You can agenda it whenever you want.
When needed.
Is there a second?
There already is.
Who seconded it?
Call the question, please.
Who seconded it?
I did.
Okay. Stacy, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Yes.
Councilmember Pulapati?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sander? Mayor Budge?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Okay, item 19.3.
I, I actually think that's me, Madam Mayor. It's me.
Well, Stacy, you want to read the?
Sure. Presentation of the draft letter to the Folsom-Cordova Unified School District Board of Education regarding the timeline of the future middle and high school in Rio de Janeiro.
Mike it.
Thank you, Mayor. Persephone, can you pull up the PowerPoint as that's coming up? Based on a Folsom-Cordova Unified School District meeting that was held, study session, city council asked at a future, request for a future conversation, future agenda item to come back and bring back an item to support the, the conversation that was happening at the Folsom-Cordova Unified School District on the timing and the construction of middle school, high schools south of 50 and specifically the Rio de Janeiro planned high schools in the Rio de Janeiro specific plan. I'm going to just briefly kind of highlight a couple of, of the conversations. Next slide, Persephone, that kind of came to this point. And as I mentioned, district-wide facilities discussion took place at the August 2023 Folsom-Cordova Unified School District Board meeting. And they talked about a variety of things, facilities, master plan, educational standards, funding options, and needs for specific to each jurisdiction. There was a conversation around the facility, or school facility improvement district, SVID, as they like to call it, number three, that covers all the developments that are happening south of 50, both in the city of Rancho Cordova, the city of Folsom, and the unincorporated area. The projected growth for SV, SFID number three could nearly double the, the size of the district and the student population over the next 20 to 30 years. It is a major growth area for all of the jurisdictions. The Measure M bond that has been passed for this district is projected to be fully exhausted in 2029. Next slide. So there are a total of six elementary schools, one middle school, one high school that is planned for the Rio de Janeiro specific plan. The current timeline that was presented and started this conversation for the next middle school, high school being built in 2034 to 2039 in the Rio de Janeiro specific plan after area, or after the Measure M funds would have been depleted. The Folsom Ranch High School was slated for the 2026-29 cycle. Existing Folsom-Cordova Unified School District middle schools and comprehensive high school in Rancho Cordova are all approximately 60 years old, just as an item of note. If timelines were swapped, the next middle, high school, next school, middle, high school will be in Rancho Cordova rather than Folsom. That's basically what started this conversation, and that's what the Folsom-Cordova Unified School District presented and brought up as, as a further discussion. As part of that discussion, they asked for this conversation to continue with the board. And at the October 9th board meeting that the Folsom-Cordova has next week, they plan on furthering this discussion. As part of the conversation of the request for future items of support, we did present a draft letter that the council could adopt to send to Folsom-Cordova Unified School District to present the, the item as far as support for moving forward with the Rio de Janeiro high school, middle school. Next slide, Persephone. So next step, this draft letter is included in the, in your, in your packet. Basically, there is a variety of things that are listed in the letter that's in, that's in there talking about achievable equitable school facilities, expanding educational opportunities for students in Rancho Cordova, retaining Rancho Cordova students and families in Rancho Cordova, and ensuring equality and equity for, for these facilities that were built with Rancho Cordova taxpayer dollars. Part two of this discussion is going to take place at the October 9th board meeting. This letter is draft, and you have a few options to either. This letter is draft, and you have a few options to either send as is or support as is. Don't send it at all. Or if there is suggestions or modifications that the council is interested in, we can adjust the letter based on those that direction and and that recommendation. You also do have the ability, if you want to do assign a subcommittee to help draft this letter and and present in next week. That's also an option before you. And so with that, I think we leave it to you for direction and discussion.
Questions for Micah? Comments on the letter?
There's a hand raised, at least in Zoom.
Yes, there is a hand raised. Thank you, Donald. So do we have any public comments?
Yes, we do. We have two speaker cards for this item, and there's a hand raised in Zoom. So we'll start with those that are here in the council chambers. Madeline Sanderson, you'll have up to three minutes. Following Madeline will be James Garcia, and then I will go to Vance in Zoom.
Good evening, Madam Mayor Budge and our council members. I do support sending a letter to the district. As a resident and someone who's lived here my entire life and attended schools in Rancho Cordova, I can tell you that there's always been disparity between both Rancho Cordova and Folsom schools. Even though there have been a few things that they've been working on to fix, it still does not add up to as much as been done on the other side. And when we have a bond that is to be between both cities, we should see something in that. We're not saying anything right now, and the money is going to run out. And I would like to see a school built here for the rest of our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Madeline. James.
Hello, James Garcia, resident of Stone Creek, as usual. I also support sending this letter. I believe that we as residents in Rancho Cordova have gotten the shaft from the school board in the sense. If you look at their high schools, they are state of the art. We've gotten some of the state of the art stuff as a result of this council giving our taxpayer money, which is only one of four school districts in the whole entire city. But we've had to supplement what the school district has failed to do for us as residents. We do need to have things made. We should have a nice state of the art high school. We shouldn't have to have hand-me-down weights for our school. We shouldn't have to pay for lockers for our our players as well. That should come from the school district. And if we don't act now, we won't get that. We'll have to do it as taxpayers and again, let other areas that are not represented by this school district suffer because we are only doing one school district. We're not dealing with Sac City, as Don Terry knows about when he was on that board. He knows that we have to close schools on occasion. We also have, of course, El Grove School District, which, again, they, the students that are living in Anatolia and further south area have to travel miles and miles to get to an actual high school. So we do need to have this sent off so our residents here don't suffer like all the other areas within the city. I support it. Thank you.
Thank you, James. So we have the gentleman from the BIA online.
Yes, Vance, can you unmute yourself?
Yes, am I unmuted?
Yes.
Perfect. Good evening, council members. Vance Gerard with the North State Building Industry Association. Thank you for allowing me to speak on this item tonight. The subject of SFID III and the funding for the schools in that area has been a topic of discussion between the BIA and the school district for several years. The issue of new schools in the area south of 50 is not really a complete conversation unless it includes a discussion about the rate at which the school district is spending the funds that are remaining in SFID III. For that reason, we are encouraging the council to amend the letter slightly to include verbiage that would also emphasize the importance of engaging in smart budgeting practices, to engage in value engineering, peer review of all design documents and ed specs in order to make sure that what dollars do remain in SFID III are maximized in their benefit. And then hopefully, we can see more than just one school come out of what is remaining in those dollars. So with that, we would greatly appreciate if the council would consider amending the letter to support smarter budgeting practices practices for SFID III. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Vance. Anything else? That's all the speakers that we have. Okay.
The the only suggestion I would make, I'm totally fine with moving this forward. If there are any edits that should be made, I think this should just go to the council members that are on the two by two with Folsom Cordova and let them wordsmith it. I don't think we need to spend time tonight to do that.
I'm amenable to that.
Second.
Yeah, that was a motion.
I feel like that was a motion. I'm gonna go with that. That's good.
Okay, Stacy, we seem to have a motion to approve the letter.
You don't need that. You don't need that.
Send it to the committee and make edits and send it to the school district.
So we have a motion by Terry and a second by Gatewood. Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yep.
Councilmember Pulapati.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes, thank you very much.
Go ahead. I'm old. Oh, nice.
Bringing up the rear here, tonight's council meeting. But good evening, Madam Chair. I am Amanda Norrie with the Economic Development Department.
Ashley Kobe, also with the Economic Development Department.
And the other members of the city council, thank you so much for having us this evening. Tonight's item, we're going to cover some of the work that we've completed and been working on the past year as well as talk about some of the existing initiatives or the new initiatives and or furthering some of the existing initiatives that we're looking to keep moving forward into our next year. We're kind of going to focus on a few different things, just some of the business initiative programs that both myself and Ashley Kobe have been running between the two of us. We are mighty team of two at the moment. And because of that, we have a very wonderful partnership with the Chamber of Commerce that we fund through a lot of their initiatives as well. And then we'll wrap it up with some of the future programs and initiatives. So we are we're some of the work we do, obviously very uniquely, is working really closely with our business community. So with 59 of our businesses, we were in the trenches doing site visits, resolution issues, working on expansion planning and site selection. This is in addition to all of the businesses that come through our development services team, which is a collaborative meeting where we have our businesses come in and meet with all the various departments. So ourselves, building, planning, public works, and then outside agencies such as fire, sewer, water, whatever the item is. And then in addition to working a lot with our brokerage community, when they have businesses that are looking to land here in Rancho Cordova, we're the point of contact with assisting a lot of those businesses come through the program. Another program that we run in really tight collaboration with our billing department is our business design assistance. This is really geared for those small businesses that need some basic plans to get through the billing department. And a lot of times those projects are so small, a lot of the firms are just really busy with work and don't have time or really the budgets to assist those. So we have stepped in and helped four businesses through those. Those range from our new wine bar that opened, a Snowball Ice Spill to Sunday, as well as Happy Niama, which is a business that focuses on the local arts community. We also have our basic business incentive program. So these can be for a wide range of projects. In addition to, these can be just straight grants. They're also part of our sign-up facade program. So we helped two local businesses with one facade and the other one with various equipment that they needed to get their businesses open and running here in Rancho Cordova. The market's pretty close to being done, but we anticipate that one opening up here rather quickly. The other program that we have that will be ending this December is our business license fee waiver. We waived almost 1,700 business fee waivers for the small businesses and our home-based business. These were businesses with 25 or fewer employees. The utility assistance program was a really interesting one for us. The various utilities throughout the state were given funds through from the state to help help those residents and businesses that were in the rears on their utility bills. When we met with SMUD, first and foremost, the first tier of people that are helped are any of the folks that are in the lower economic development, local economic groups. So those were all covered by these programs, as well as just general people who had were in the rears on their utility payments. The state stepped in and covered those through SMUD. In our particular case, none of our businesses were able to receive these funding. So we worked with SMUD, and we found those businesses, again, under 25 employees that may have been a rears on their utility payments. And we stepped in for 250 of those and used these ARPA dollars to cover the utility payments, same as what was done for the residential community as well. And so then we did recovery grants. So we did almost $1.1 million for 58 businesses throughout our city. And this was in three rounds of funding. Really, these focused on a lot on a lot of the businesses that couldn't qualify for state funding, be it some of our small businesses run their personal and business accounts through one checking account because they're just a small business, and so they wouldn't have qualified for any of the state funding that was available. A lot of the other cutoffs for businesses that were open pre-COVID, we had, very fortunately, quite a few businesses that had opened up in a different time period or pretty close to the start of COVID. None of them were available to qualify for any state or federal programs out there, so we really kind of targeted those. The other things that we were seeing a lot of as business owners, some people may not know this, but a lot of time when they sign into a business lease, their home is held as collateral. So unable to save their homes, they were doing various high interest debt to make sure that they could cover all of those payments and or keep their employees covered. So these funds went ahead to help a lot of those local businesses stay open, keep their employees hired, but also help with their high interest debt that they had acquired through COVID and covering those, as well as all the other technology and the different things that they were looking to do to pivot and modify their businesses to keep them open and thriving through COVID. And now I'm going to put it over to Ashley to cover our workforce program.
So in last fiscal year, 2023, 24, we had two workforce development initiatives. The first one is our workforce development grants, where our department worked with four nonprofit organizations to offer workforce development to business owners and youth. Those applications come in through CEIF. And if they have a workforce focus, those typically get referred over to our department to work with collaboratively. The second one is our workforce development training program, where we funded just a little over $2 million for 215 residents in partnership with 10 training providers. And those programs are still go ongoing, but we'll delve into those in the future slides. For our workforce development grants, we worked with Max Reach for her Think Like a CEO program, as well as Studio T Side Hustle Academy. Max Reach works with six Rancho Cordova businesses, really taking individuals who are in a place of being the main employee, if not the entrepreneur that started their organization, and then putting them through business training and coaching to coach them up to then be a manager, if you will, or to bring on employees and help expand their businesses. Studio T Side Hustle Academy matches youth with small local businesses to train both on branding, marketing, social media, and much more. So that program reached seven Rancho Cordova businesses who received six weeks of training and 14 pitch videos, all produced and worked on directly by eight Rancho Cordova youth. As part of our workforce development grants, we also have a partnership with the Folsom Cordova Community Partnership. They have a professional pathways program that's in partnership with VSP. Students engage in an eight-hour career readiness, career readiness and life skills training and are introduced to employment opportunities within VSP and other organizations. Folsom, Folsom Lake Community College also participates in this program and explains different career paths and opportunities to the participants. And we had, in this last fiscal year, two of those participants received employment at VSP. The third or the fourth program that we also partnered with was the CalPal Youth Apprenticeship Readiness Accelerator, or YARA for short. This one, the timeline got extended a little bit further. So the first cohort has been completed. And in this training, students receive apprenticeship construction training for the first portion of the training. And then in the second half of the of the training, they actually partner with Westmont College so they can experience college and career preparedness. And so students kind of get experience in both realms for future career decisions. They're currently recruiting for their second cohort.
Tina said today they have 22 people signed up.
That's perfect. That's what we like to see. And we hope and that was our first year in partnering with them. So we really hope that that word of mouth spreads those programs. For our workforce development training programs, these are the 10 providers that we have partnered with. And this heat map here shows where all of our applicants have come from, which, as you can see, we touch just a little bit of every community or every neighborhood in Rancho Cordova. And mainly, the way that we have received feedback from these individuals is that it was predominantly word of mouth. So this is coming from our previous year's program. And we have 165 residents enrolled in our workforce development programs. We're currently eight months in out of the available 217 spots. So we have about 76% enrollment. Half of the training programs have completed their training and have moved on to career placement. The other half are continuous enrollment. So we'll see those numbers continue to increase as we round out this workforce development program. You'll also notice that 65 participants, 65% of our participants reported being from an ethnic minority, which we we really are happy to see that the diversity within our programs. And also, we have about 50/50 participants being male and female, so it's pretty equal split. And 54% of our participants reported being unemployed upon entering this program. So we're excited to see, once these career placements start coming in, what that looks like for our residents in this transformation. As I had mentioned before, five of our programs are cohort-based. So CyberProud, DP Global, General Assembly, Wealth Base Health, and Women in Data have all completed their training and have moved into the certificate attainment and or employment assistance. And then we have our other five programs that allow for continuous enrollment. So we'll continue to see those numbers be reported out through our long-term metrics tracking, which we also have a partnership with SSL Innovations to engage in surveys with all of our participants to track all of those metrics. Currently, we have two surveys that have been deployed with all of our participants. And we have a 77% completion rate for the participant survey and a 38% completion rate for the program completion. We anticipate that number increasing as these asynchronous programs continue to train and then place an employment. A lot of our programs, and of course, as expected, have had to pivot through these training models, which is always interesting to see as we look at their graduation numbers and getting through training. So some had a high attrition rate or low enrollment. Some programs have seen new material that needed to be integrated in the middle of training, specifically General Assembly. So they're doing coding, and they've integrated into their training how to integrate AI into their workload. And that's something that they kind of had to pivot mid-program, which is always interesting to see as we see all of these outcomes. As we look at our workforce development programs moving forward, we would like to lean into employer connections and direct placements with Rancho Cordova businesses, not only as a benefit for our residents to obtain work in the community, but also as a recruitment tool for businesses looking to locate in the region. One program we're considering specifically will be in partnership with our chamber, leveraging our existing partnerships with them to host, leveraging our existing partnerships with our chamber for a host of relate programs related to business retention, which is why this partnership and workforce is a natural fit as we look at our 2324 agreement. I will actually send it over to Diane to talk about those 2223 initiatives and the programs that they have planned for 2324.
Good evening, Diane Rogers, President and CEO of the Rancho Cordova Area Chamber of Commerce. Wanted to share with you some of the current programs that we went through this year. Many of you are familiar with the, you can go to that slide, with the OurCityApp program. You can see up there on the screen the number of registered users, and we had 188 participating businesses with 128,000 in economic activity. I did want to share with you that that program has expired, and we've chosen not to continue it for a lot of very good reasons. It's one thing I would say about this city is if they find that it's working, it moves forward. If it meets challenges and there's something better in the hopper, they're willing to to make those decisions. So I appreciate that. We did put a lot of effort into it. I'm proud of that effort. And it was, but it is time to move on to a different type of program. The next slide I wanted to share with you, this is probably the program that I'm most excited and personally proud of. This is our M-BAR, our Minority Business Assistant Recovery Kickstart. Probably could work on the acronym a little bit. And we work very hard to have, we look. Um, and we work very hard to have, we look at the business community here in Rancho Cordova as sort of three tiers of businesses. So this is our first tier around business retention. These are very small local businesses, often one or two employees, um, often very new businesses. And they have a ten-week cohort. They're required to participate um, on all of the, the classes. Um, in some cases, it actually includes private business um, coaching. Once they complete those sessions, they do receive a fifteen-hundred-dollar stipend. Um, and then in this past year, we did have three different languages were offered. And I'm proud of the fact that we had quite a number of our um, facilitators are from Rancho Cordova and their instructors are from Rancho Cordova. Um, the other one thing that's kind of cool out of all this, um, is that now some of these businesses are actually doing business with each other. I do want to do a shout out to the business license um, program that Amanda was mentioning earlier. We actually had one gentleman who wanted to participate in the M-BAR program, did not have a business license, and our office, your office, was able to turn it around in less than two hours. He was able to participate in the program that evening. So we're very grateful for that. Um, and you can see a list of the companies there. We're in the middle of our third cohort, um, and we'll graduate that towards the end. And thank you, Mary Bud, you participated in all the graduations for this, and they love coming to this very room and being handed those checks and talking about their programs is pretty, it's very exciting for them. So we appreciate that.
It's lots of fun.
It is fun, isn't it? Yeah. Um, the second uh, program that we were uh, working on this year, you can go to the next slide, is Economic Gardening. Um, if you're not familiar with Economic Gardening, this is what I would call our Tier Two programs. These are businesses that usually have between a million and fifty million in annual revenue. They employ at least five, but no more than a hundred employees, including the owner. They demonstrate growth in employment or revenue for at least two of the past five years. And what's really critical about this particular program is they must be able to demonstrate that they can derive the capacity of at least to fifty percent of their sales from markets outside of the city of Rancho Cordova. What's important about that is making sure that we bring new funds into the city rather than churn the same dollars over and over again. So you see up there, there, there's three companies. Um, the icons up at the top are the type of work and information we get from the economic data, or the Economic Gardening group um, out of Colorado. There's consultants all over the country that meet with these folks and go through their business plans, talk about all different kinds of things. And just point out that um, Language World was able to improve their online presence and their being able to be seen. Um, Capital Label Company, um, they are planning to add two new positions and a estimated increase of half a million dollars. And Intercept Security, um, their assessment is currently in progress. So um, it's a great program and um, we're going to continue to see how we can modify it a little bit to, to get some more businesses involved in that. Um, and then the next slide, um, regarding business needs and workforce, I should emphasize that we're taking um, our role as uh, business retention very seriously. So while um, the programs you can see we're involved in are focused on business retention, we do recognize the need to work on workforce development. So an example, one of those programs was the Regional Business Education Collaborative, um, where we worked with Los Rios Community College. And um, we were able to host forty-seven students at a resume writing, writing workshop here at the, we'd had the Business Expo. And many of you, if you did attend the Business Expo, you saw that over half of those businesses were hiring. So we made a concerted effort to reach out to our um, community college folks and have them sign up through a program that's called Handshake, um, to actually register and then invite them to come out with well-prepared resumes and some training that they've gone through to be able to talk to people. And the good news is there were actually connections made, people hired, interviews taking place. We provided a place for people actually to go off-site and have interviews that very day. Um, so that, that's that. And then um, we're working with Visit Rancho Cordova because hospitality and it's such a big industry here in Rancho Cordova with our uh, seventeen hotels that we want to make sure that our, our students and our folks that are interested in hospitality realize that there's much more beyond working a front desk. It's engineering, it's marketing, it's all different kinds of things. And so we're doing things like having fan tours. We're doing um, workshops, different things so we can introduce the hospitality industry to a lot of students to get them to see well beyond, just like I said, the front desk work. Nothing wrong with that front desk work, but um, just so there's a lot more to it involved than that. Uh, we also connected and um, some of our students were interested in engineering internships. While they didn't actually turn into internships, they did, um, your engineering folks um, here in the city um, spoke to them, had interviews with them, gave them opportunities to share what their vision was and what their experience was in their area. Um, one of our local businesses, Herc, um, they have a fantastic internal internship program. And so we did an internship webinar with them. And then we also have done some construction um, panels with Tykert and Elbeach Construction with um, twenty-three students participating in that. Um, also wanted to share with you that virtually all of the um, workforce development um, logos that you saw on the page that um, Ashley was presenting before, we've been in contact and we're trying to support those folks as the very best as we can. So, the next one, please? So for the next year, we definitely want to continue the M-BAR program. Um, you know, if we can reach thirty small businesses that, like as I mentioned, is our first tier folks. Um, and then one of the things we're going to do is focus one of those on procurement. We feel that there's a lot of opportunity for our small businesses to get involved in procurement, but they simply feel either overwhelmed or don't realize they can actually be subs. So for example, with um, the seed program with SMUD, you don't have to be a primary, you can be a secondary, or you can work with one of those companies and they don't see, they don't know that that's an option. So one of the things we're working on. The other, the next one, um, icon that you see there is a leading regarding an employer-led, data-driven strategy for business retention. And that is basically what we call TPM, the Talent Pipeline Management. That's a program that the US Chamber um, has. Um, when we were in DC this past year, Micah and Amanda and myself were able to visit the Chamber. And what's really important about this is, and, and David, I'm sure you'll appreciate, this is very data-driven. Um, this is very scientific approach, um, and it's from exclusively the lens from the business community. So many of these programs are great. You hear that we need more X, but nobody actually checks with the business community to say, do we really need X or something else related to X? And my example of that might be welding. Heard a lot of need of welding, but didn't realize that there's like fourteen kinds of welding, and we need to make sure we're doing the right kind of welding. Um, so we're going to work on that. And then the other um, issue that we've seen and heard a lot of, and I'm sure you as council members have also heard, is the state of childcare and the fact that childcare and all of its different elements is having a significant impact on whether people stay home, whether they um, in terms of working remotely, whether they relocate. And we want to look at this again from the employer-led option side. How do we address the affordability and availability of childcare, the role and responsibility with public investment? And how can we use technology to improve access and care? So those are some of our plans for the next fiscal year. And if you have any questions regarding those, I'd be happy to answer them. And I know Amanda has a few more things.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, thinking about the work.
Thank you.
And thinking about some of the work that we have already started and moving forward in this next year, as Diane mentioned, um, the contract with the Chamber will be looking to have a conversation with you in the next uh, council meeting or two.
Approved. Oh, I'm sorry.
Little early, little early on that.
Sec you.
We'll, we'll have that conversation.
I'm seconding you, Donald? No?
But some of the conversations really, when we heard um, from all of you council members, that that was the, the missing piece that you really wanted us to start exploring is talking with our local businesses, what do they need? And kind of backing into the programs um, from that lens. In terms of childcare, we have currently um, two programs in the pipeline. Um, one that is focused on the existing childcare that is here and helping those individual businesses that they have, maybe they have additional slots that are available. Are they not getting out there? And providing the business support to the existing childcare to do that. Um, we have another one that's actually looking at actually individuals who are interested in starting their own childcare business and working with those individuals to do all the things, soup to nuts, to get them up and running for the first couple of years and kind of focusing them on that business and um, all the pieces they need for their business to actually have new childcare slots in the city of Rancho Cordova. Um, we will be, our economic development strategy is quite antiquated. So we are looking to um, start a new effort with you. So we will be meeting with all of you here shortly um, as we kind of launch into that effort. One thing we have heard repeatedly and we do believe is this is kind of the key moment to talk about that is really an office park study. Uh, we do know that um, office vacancy is pretty high at the moment. And so this will give our opportunity to hear from you all some policy directions on some things with some data behind it of some possibilities of things that we could do. Um, we still are looking to um, increase and expand our design assistance program that seems to be working really well with some of our smaller businesses. And um, we other think the piece that we, we haven't been doing is struggling, and I think we really need to be honing a little bit more, is really that CRM or that customer relationship management database. And be able to really pinpoint who all we're talking to, when we're talking to them, and be able to provide that information back out to you. So you get a better idea of the, the breadth and depth of the businesses that we touch each and every day. Um, and then our grant programs, we've had, we have three of them currently in the mix. And those are probably good for another refresh as well. And we're looking to do that under the strategic plan initiative as well, while we're having those conversations um, with our community. So those are some of our ideas. Um, we wanted to give this opportunity just to kind of update you on everything. We're gladly take any questions, comments, feedback. Um, Diane is also will be here and be happy to take any questions, comment, feedback as well.
Questions for Diane and staff?
Since everyone's here and it's critical, I figure I'll talk for a little bit. Uh, no, um, it's very interesting, the um, daycare. And creating economic development while taking care of the ability to allow more of our citizens to get back out into the community and work is critical. Um, I didn't realize how vague it was because I'm a tech guy and I was like, I didn't. But now that it's now coming to be one of the most talked about things that we need to address, because we're not going to be able to get a lot of women and a lot of single parents back into the workforce as what the level we need them at if we can't find them affordable daycare. Seeing that our daycare, I think, averages twenty-five hundred to thirty-five hundred in the city of Rancho Cordova. It's very, most of us are being priced out of the market. And it's a good way for a stay-at-home mom to create a job that she doesn't have to work on too.
Stay-at-home parents.
I, I stand corrected. Thank you. Second. No, it wasn't. I'm sorry. Um, uh, data-driven governance and data-driven decisions. Uh, we're looking for more of that. So working with companies like Women in Data and other groups that basically can look at our data to give us smart answers is critical to pieces. Working with um, uh, that as on the economic level is even bigger. Um, we're getting ready to do a big symposium between Wesack, Rancho, Elgro, and some other places that want to talk about how we can start to share our data and spread it between them on an epiconomical level. Meaning, when the Sacramento Kings have an event, what does that do for Rancho Cordova? Because do they take the light rail? Do they go down there? Is there certain spots in Rancho that actually are affected by that? Would it make sense to have more cops, more bars, more something? And then the big thing along with economic development should be the placement of big stuff that's going to be able to draw more people into our city. I'm looking, I want to see the next, you know, as I get kicked out of office, I want to see the next, you know, twenty years put together with good things that people have said. And if you could just get me a place to have a suit made.
Where do you wear suits?
This sounds familiar.
Listen, I just need two things.
That was always Kurt's thing.
And Dan Skolton's thing.
Listen, he was, I'm replacement for Dan Skolton.
There we go.
Dan Skolton had two things.
You channeled it.
I got three years on my way out the door.
That's, I was gonna say that too.
We gotta get.
You're gonna get kicked out now.
Yes, I'm getting kicked out, so I gotta get a.
In three years.
If you could get me a suit guy and some sort of place I can call a hospital. I know hospitals really don't exist anymore, but if I could have that. Um, and then I, when we do this economic study, I really want to work on our business parks to turn it in and help encourage it to survive. So there's a lot of stuff that can be done. There's a lot of creative stuff. Drag the council with you and get our opinions. Like, don't just work in like a, by yourself. Like, come tap on David for his experience, Donald for his, mine on the technology side, Linda's that. Get us engaged because we want to help you champion this next step. Oh, and Siri, now she's a tech person. You don't need her. Listen.
I was gonna say, everybody but Siri?
Yeah, listen. What does Siri do? Again? I'm sorry, no, it's just joking.
What do you do?
No, um, but that kind of thing, so we can help guide and structure because you know, one of the greatest pieces I always hear is the economic engine of Rancho Cordova is one of the, besides the Cordova Community Council, is one of the two most jealous things that we have. And if we can find a way to bolster that and bring more jobs in, other things are, is what opportunities did we, could we have had that we, that we had to walk away from because we didn't have the infrastructure? And, and I don't know, like more than a person working in economic development. You know, if we could get a couple more people there, like besides one person, that'd be amazing. Is that in the economic study? Like?
We have two. There's two of us.
Who knows? Like, I, I'm scared at any moment, one of the two of you is going to have something happen and it'll just be one.
Like win the lottery. Let's not, let's not.
Yeah, you know what I'm saying?
One of them just got out of like a cast, okay? So let's be careful.
You just put a curse on her.
No, you did.
Second. Um, anyways, so those are the kind of things I'm looking for. I really want to step up our economic development. I think there's amazing opportunities. I think someone's going to put something big in our city, and I don't know who it is. But I feel like it's time. We're, we're eighty to a hundred thousand people. We have growth potential all over the place. Who's going to put the next piece of economic development slash entertainment in our city? Who's going to be that next person? I know you were right on the edge of getting a movie theater, if they still have those. Uh, someday a bowling alley, if they still have those. But that kind of economic engine that also turns into entertainment, that would be amazing. So hopefully, those are the kind of things I'm looking for. And how do we double down on these tech jobs? Like, we have Solidite. We just locked them in. So now what businesses are about to fly in because they want to be next to Solidite, then you can help facilitate into our business district. And then I'm always willing to see how I can bolster the Chamber as we do, like small, medium. The people that help out the small businesses, not a small business, only reason I'm still here is because Diane took me under her wing and helped me through the hard times and working with the city. So how do we double down on that and grow that to where that stabilized, the people know in the city when they need help, they go to Diane. And then when you're a certain size, you go straight to, to the lone person working in that office that isn't injured. Which both of you guys seem to get injured every other month. I'm just putting it out there. Like, maybe we cannot dive off of mountains and stuff. You know what? Couch is never a bad thing. No one ever got hurt falling off the couch. Having a snack. Geez. All right. Thanks, guys.
Anybody else?
I'll just add, I uh, spent part of last week at the National League of Cities in um, DC. Had a lot of meetings there. One particular segment, though, had our staff for um, community economic development there. And it was interesting. And so I posed sort of this, you serve on that committee, right?
I do.
Yeah. Um, I posed this question to them, you know, uh, a lot of dollars are being spent, you know, from ARPA, et cetera, by cities in economic development. What are you hearing back in terms of, you know, what are like the wise things we all need to be focused on? Number one thing they said in terms of recommendation was find programs that have guaranteed jobs at the backend. Like, if the employer can specify, I need people to do this training. And if they do this training, I will hire. Um, and then they frankly had a caution about a lot of consultants, a lot of nonprofits, a lot of for-profits that are running programs but aren't necessarily getting great results. They're employing people in the program. They're subsidizing some people. They might be getting some education, but it's not leading to a job. So that was, that was a very interesting case. And Amanda, the conference you and I attended last year talked about that matching of your local employers. Figure out what their needs are and then either assisting them with a program to train those people or finding someone who can get the specific program to get that guaranteed job. So I think that connection, if I just make quick comments here, that connection is what I think is the most important.
What's fascinating about you asking that committee that question is we, when we do the, the like summer visit somewhere, we talk a lot about economic development, but whenever we're in DC or the, or the national conference, the, the, the national summit or whatever it is, um, we're always talking affordable housing. It's like, like, that's almost exclusive. We're talking about affordable housing and like property rights and like schemes around like, 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 like rent-to-own programs where they take money from people and that kind of stuff. And, and a lot around like, like renters' rights and stuff. Um, so it's interesting that you posed that question and you actually got good answers because that usually only happens when they're at the summer, like visit to, like the chairs, like, you know. The last one I went to was like Fort Worth, I think. And then we did Henderson once. Um, but on the note of what you're going to say, that was actually going to be the one comment. And I'm assuming we don't have any public comment. That's why we're just moving into staff direction.
I do have a public comment.
So do we want to take that? I'd be, I'd be happy to give more direction, but it feels like that's premature.
Let's have a public comment. Helen Waylon-Bachal.
Welcome, Helen.
Hello, Helen Waylon-Bachal from the Tiffany area. Um, there's a lot of information in here and I've got a lot of mixed emotions about what I've said. First, I looked at the fifty-eight businesses that got um, a little over one million dollars. My question is, do they have the viability to get past the five-year mark? Five-year mark is, which anybody knows. Five-year mark is, which anybody knows, is the do or die in a small business, a startup, how many of them make it past there? I look at the training of the 215 people. That equates to about $9,300 per person. Of these people trained, which, how have they gone, where have they performed, and do they have the ability to get the better-paying jobs? My background is, I'm from a family of seven that lived off of a family of four income. There was no, no way was I ever going to do anything. I joined the Air Force. I have a degree and a background in com electronics. I then finished two master programs from a kid out of high school, when women never got things other than banking and stuff like that. So when I, I look at this, since management's my background, in healthcare, a master's in healthcare and a master's in business, and I look at this, and I'm wondering, I went to college to get a degree in, a certificate in total quality management. This is after I've had my two master's degree. What I found out about most of the students in the class, they sat in the back, twiddling on their phones, doing all sorts of stuff, and not really there to learn. I finally caught a quits to one of the classes, I stood up and I said to the teacher, I'm sorry I'm interfering, but the students aren't paying attention. So my question is, do we have the right students in? I'm always concerned that we're looking for the minorities, but there are some white people that couldn't afford these, this type of training, and we're giving it strictly to a minority base. So I feel that there's kind of some reverse discrimination going on, because in my day and age, the only option was to get a low-paying job. And you know when you walk into a business, if there are 50% or more women, they're low-paying jobs normally. So I would like to know, how are we tracking these 58 businesses? How are we tracking these 215 students to see if we are really getting a return on our investment? Or if we're just giving them jobs that have dead-end opportunities that don't add to making money, that the average income in Rancho Cordova is $70,000? Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. Anything else?
I do not see any additional hands raised in Zoom or by phone.
So I saw some comments, but wow, that, I would just say that I work for a company, and in my division of senior vice presidents, at which we all make pretty good money, I'm the only guy. And the rest of them are women that make really good money. So just because women are in certain, certain sectors doesn't mean that they don't get paid well. And I applaud the diversity that I saw in that graph of the participants in your, in your program. Trying to reach minority communities for trainings like this is actually really hard, and I'm really pleased at the number and the diversity that we saw there, regardless of what somebody in the public just said. With that being said, I want to agree with you on, on your comments around quantifying this kind of work. I know we had a conversation with Alex Tagarian, who a lot of us know from the Chamber and a lot of other things, but with Capital Impact Partners, and the amazing work that they've been doing with Los Rios and Kaiser around quantifying, the work that Kaiser has been trying to do around building trades and the lack of people going into building trades, which is making it very hard to build medical facilities all over this region. And they've engaged with Roseville on a lot of this similar work, and I know that we've started to have the conversation, I don't know where it is, that's really going to be at the staff level, but I think, I think that's what we were missing with all of this, was we had a lot of resources and we were trying to get it out into the community as quickly as possible, because, well, at one point, we were, the fear was, you know, we had this huge unemployment blip from COVID, and now we have this problem where employers can't find people to do this work. And you can't, and you can look just as far as like Trytool and a couple of companies around here, where you don't need any specialized training, just show up and they'll train you, right? And you'll start off making, what, 40, 50 bucks an hour or something? So, you know, we have some really great employment opportunities for people here, again, without any, even the specialized training that we're talking about. But I think that's the one thing that's missing from it, is figuring out which ones of these things are working, and working with employers to help them, help them guide us as to where we should put these dollars to, to provide them with the employer, the employees that they need. Yeah, and I would just say that, you know, the, the study that you're talking about when it comes to the business park, you know, I remember, it was, it was 2017 when I was mayor, and I remember getting the call of somebody saying, you know, how does it feel that we lost the call center for Verizon, and now you're losing Aero, you know, Aerojet's closing and moving out? And I said, that allows us to land even better employers. I mean, Aerojet went from 20,000 people, they were down to 1,200. Like, the opportunities to put other businesses in there that have a viable, long-term, you know, life in this community is phenomenal. And now, you know, you go talk to Barry Barum, I mean, this is the business park that he's pitching. We are his economic plan, right? Is filling up these buildings that, you know, VSP's got a couple of them for, for sale, you know, some of these other call centers are turning into other things, including R&amp;D facilities. We have huge opportunities, and so I absolutely, you know, support doing the study, figuring out what, what the potential is for a lot of this. And the only other thing I would say that we need to include when we do that is a plan to add housing. I think we have the exact same problem that we have in downtown Sacramento, is we have, they have office buildings that aren't that full right now, and the way to get back to filling them is residential development. And I don't think we're going to do council reports tonight, but I'll just get my AB1234 report out of the way and say that I went to Toronto for, along with Garrett, on the annual study mission for the, for the Metro Chamber, and if there's one thing Toronto's really good at, is throwing up steel and glass. And what was really fascinating was, if you looked at the skyline of the newer stuff, and I kept, I asked this to a handful of developers, they put balconies on most, all of their residential high-rises. So you can look in the skyline and know, that's an office building, maybe that's a hotel, but that's, that's condos or apartments, right? And the way that they've been able to make it work is they, you know, they have people going back to work here and there, but, but they still have a large, you know, remote workforce. But the businesses that are thriving, the retail and the shopping, are within a few blocks of where those high-rises are. And so what we really need to be rethinking is, what are our parking standards in this business park, and how much of it can we lose to put residential development here? And, and, and high-density development here? And whether that's driving for, you know, the conversation around a high school or anything else, the most efficient way to use your land for housing is multifamily development, whether that's condos or, and condos are, just from a legal standpoint, are very difficult to continue to keep as owner-occupied units, just from, just because of litigation and a lot of other things, that condos are not a great way to drive homeownership, unfortunately, because investors come in and buy them, if they get into litigation, only investors can buy them, you can't finance them anymore. So just in the US, it's a much more difficult thing than we even saw in Toronto, where they don't have some of those rules in place, and they still have a 30% to 40% corporate ownership rate of their condos. And they don't have the problems that we have that where there are like three condo complexes in Sacramento County that you can finance with a FHA mortgage or Fannie Mae. And so, things to think about, but I would, I would definitely say as part of filling up with jobs in this job center is filling up with residents in this, in this business park. Thanks.
Anybody else? Any other comments? Thank you, ladies. This has been really exciting, and everybody's taken away good ideas, and we'll be back to you. Or you'll be back to us.
We'll be back to you.
Okay. Okay, so, last item. Request for future agenda items?
I have a very brief one that I'd just like staff to look at, and we can talk about it later. I'd like to look at long-term impounds of cars involved in sideshows. Like, six months to a year, take their car away. Blocking streets, doing donuts, doing drag races on Sunrise Boulevard, that kind of stuff.
That's how I make my change.
Yeah, so, I, I, I want to disincentivize fast and the furious from happening in our city anymore, and let them go do it somewhere else. But we have a lot of long, wide streets that, that attract this kind of activity, and while I don't believe that higher fines lead to people behaving themselves when it comes to speeding and other things like that, these people, one, have very expensive cars, and can afford to pay fines if they end up having to do it, but I think literally just taking away their cars for longer, if that's legal, I think may be a way to deter them to go find somewhere else to do it. So I'd like to talk, discuss that at some point.
Okay.
And then I have one, I'm gonna let Mica take a look at them, but I have some African-American sponsored events. One is the African-American concert, the big thing the newspaper is running, and they're looking for sponsorships. So I'd like to come in at a different level, and if you need council approval, I'd like to actually talk about that. If not, I'd like to start sponsoring these events, because I think having an African-American violinist come into the city and do something like at the Coriata Plaza or something like that would be really special, because they're touring around, they're called the Color of, Color, and then Larry Lee's thing, the black newspaper, is doing a pretty special event in the area, The Observer. And then, then there's something that's going on at the, at Safety Bill, that I think really would help out the community. So take a look at the email I sent you, and then if we need to, I can bring it back before council.
So I think, you know, this is all within my authority to do, and we might spend a little more on some of these events, and just kind of general direction from you right now is fine, so if you're supportive of those things, so.
Okay. Great. So if there's nothing else to come before council, we'll adjourn tonight in memory of Senator Diane Feinstein. Good night, all.